Absolutely, one moment here, you get that little gotta button and you're all set, Ms. Lambert, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 25th, 2023 Select, Tissueway Board, we held in the Select for our hearing room. We heard personally, by the rest, we're also on our Facebook, everybody wants to know the deserving. At 6:30, we have a continued public hearing with side by side review. This is probably what runs this meeting, ladies of the government, we're like listen to the applicant, then we're gonna listen to our peer review engineer, then we're gonna go to the town planner, then we're gonna come to the board, and then we're gonna take part in it, okay? Alright, so applicants, come on.
Good evening.
Good evening everyone, for the record, I'm Attorney Steve Gard for the applicants, with me as you know is Jamie Keller, from Axum Architects, of course. Greg Morse from Morse Engineering, Project Engineering, we also have the owners, John Tedeschi, Jim in the audience as well, with us. And so, as you know, this is an iteration of 61D Driftway, the special permit project for multi-mixed use building, 22 residential uses and any commercial space, and first of all, some residential components, well. Since the last time that we've been here, we have submitted some revised plans to update you relatives to some of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting, as well as the peer review report. I think, I'd like to, I know that Karen has prepared sort of an agenda for us to go through the summary of the issues, and I think that was very kind of review that to summarize that for all of us. The documents that you're looking at this evening, that Greg just handed out, was excerpts from the zoning bylaw relative to this project, and its handwritten notes as to how this project complies with those zoning requirements, and just a quick explanation. So, I guess, I think the way I would be happy to approach this, kind of like we did last time, was to allow the chair to, you know, walk us through the issues that are presented on the summary of issues dated 5/25/2023 that we just received this evening, which is essentially most of what was on John's report, as well as some other loose ends that we had. Or, I could be happy to give you a presentation as well. I think that, you know, we have made presentations on this project in the past, it's probably better to focus the issues on the agenda, as has been suggested by the town planner.
Absolutely.
Okay, so with respect to the waivers, the first one says Section 755b, 3d, to allow reduction in the building height step back requirements, that waiver is still on the table for us. That was one of the waivers we still requested, and as it was presented last night by Jamie, we are asking for relief of a 0.4% of one of the planes, and then a 7% relief on each other. This is something that, my understanding is the board has granted this sort of relief in the past for our public projects, is something that is required from an architectural design standpoint to allow the building to have the articulation necessary to comply with the bylaw, to give it those elements, the roof lines and the dormance and whatnot. I'm happy to let Jamie review that again, but I think probably you've heard from him, you've heard from me on this issue, the, it is within the board's authority, as it is spelled out in the bylaw, that you have the authority to grant that waiver for these two little minor sort of encroachments, so to speak, if you want to call them that, into the space that would be otherwise prohibited by the step backs. You know, the alternative is, is we modify the building so that it becomes less pretty, you know, we make the building, we take out these elements that are encroaching on the, call it the volume of the step backs, and then the building becomes more blocky, from less architect-y pleasing, as I say, right Jamie? So, but it is, it is something you could do, we would rather not, we would like to have buildings, we'd like to have this building look at that way, as opposed to some of the other, you know, buildings that have been erected in the neighborhood. We think that this building is prettier and more appropriate for a northern coastal village aspect, so. That's, that, so then, the second waiver is, this one has, this one crossed.
Wait a minute, can we stop?
Oh, sure.
Maybe we should try to, so we resolve issues, and that's what we're doing. Try to do, try to, try to, you know, decide how the board feels, one at a time, so that we can make progress.
Oh, yeah, sure. That makes total sense to me, so I will defer, I will defer to the board.
So based the only two waivers?
Uh, yeah, the only two waivers are, well, actually, the second waiver, Steve, is that we withdraw that one too. We're gonna do the 10 foot crosswalk, so that's, it crossed, I was gonna say, that one crossed in the mail with John's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so we do what we're looking at.
Yes, so those two, that one's gone, so the first one is that one, and then the special permit findings.
No, no, that's the waivers, that's the waivers.
Okay, that's the only waiver.
I think it's technically another waiver, but we'll, we can get into that when we talk about affordable units.
Well, that was, yeah.
And it's a mi- it's a minor thing that you granted before.
That would be, I guess, on the special permits section, right, affordable units. At least that's what I thought, but that's fine.
We'll talk about it when we get to affordable units.
Yep, so this is, so the only waiver is this step back issue, that's it.
So just Rebecca, can you?
Exactly where, is it the, I know we talked about, but sorry, can you just refresh my memory, is it right there?
Oh, yes. Jamie has that picture that we did last time, the empty volumes, it's really telling what the, what it looks like with the, what we're asking for. If you go to that, Jamie, I think it'll help.
Well, I mean, I'll first point it out here, with the very, very minor violation, but this side here was just the tip of the top of those cables, but what, what the most discussion about is this sort of element on this side, which became like a topic that we discussed quite a bit with the Design Review Board, and the explanation of that, you know, without having that prominent element on a corner lot with the step back requirement, you kind of get into this, what I call like a wedding cake factor, where you're trying to push back at an angle on a corner. And so, we sort of decided that we felt that this was an important element of the design to kind of avoid that look, and give a nice prominent feature as we kind of drive down the Driftway, but the diagram depicting that is. So we created these to illustrate the percentages that popped through step back area, which is shown in green. So really, the majority of that 70%, 7% is that gable element right there. And the general idea being that removing that would really have.
So you're talking about the top, the top, yeah, did you just point that out?
It's at the top.
Very top.
He's showing what?
What, right here?
No, in your shadow.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's the, the gray.
Right, right here.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, with the kookula, right. So that's really the major piece that makes up that 7%. And I think, you know, in Design Review, we kind of agreed it was a part of the building that worked, so. That was, that was our thought.
Yeah, no, we, we got a Design Review that hasn't recommended this as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, they thought, for this, for this one, they thought it was.
Yeah, I just, just want to confirm that they, they bought off on it.
The 0.4%, this non-conformance is negligible, we feel it is acceptable, part of the conditions set forth through the zoning code. That's along New Driftway, along Old Driftway. They thought that the move, the design made more sense with the context, and so they, they supported that.
In that, what we're talking about, okay.
There was a recommendation on the question, Bob, we're all set, okay, so.
So the board is fine with the, with the first requested waiver? We would vote in favor of a decision that would include that waiver, thank you. The second waiver we discussed, that's the 10 foot sidewalk, we've withdrawn that request, and we will make the 10 foot crosswalk. Now we get into the special permit section, Section 580.4c, to allow a higher density of units that permitted by right, 12 units allowed by right, up to 28 would be allowed by special permit. So, we have requested a special permit for fewer than 28, which would be allowed by special permit. If you recall, we came in with 25 units in the beginning, we've reduced that to 22. We feel that 22 is the number that works for this site, it works for the parking, it works for the building. And that is the, with five as vulnerable units, which we'll get to down the road.
So, with that being said, I want to request that the board take two star votes tonight. One is going to be on the left of the building, and one is going to be on the density bonus, so just keep that in mind.
Does the board have any questions on the special permit application for 580.4c?
Alright, so, they need a density bonus for 10 units. What they have offered for, last time, at the last meeting, you tabled the discussion on the, on the density bonus. I have communicated with Town Council, and Town Council would indeed accept an easement for the sidewalk that's already existing. So, we, we will accept that as a density bonus. Town Council feels that an easement is appropriate in that spot. You offered the sidewalk along New Driftway, but we're not, the board last time said they weren't going to accept that because this is a pedestrian frontage zone that's required, so the sidewalk is required. I have talked with the town administrator and the Director of DPW. This proposed sidewalk that they plan along New Driftway plans to stop at their property line. We feel it would be a public benefit to extend the sidewalk from the Tedeschi property line down to the Drew driveway. And extending it to the Drew driveway also means, on the far side of the Drew driveway, connect, putting up connection for a handicap access, and then also going across the street and putting a handicap accessible ramp across the street with a crosswalk. We don't have the exact square footage of that, some of the granite curbing is already there under the Drew project. There is a sidewalk there under, on part of that, under the Drew project. It's very, very close, on the far, on the right away, closest to the Drew property. So, I feel that something could be worked out with, with the, with the numbers, that it would be beneficial to, to this, for this project to complete that sidewalk as part of their density bonus. It would be a benefit to the town. Right, can you guys spitball like how far that would be, do you have any idea?
It's approximately 120 feet total.
Do you have an approximate idea of how much that would cost? Like off the top, I know it's hard to.
Normal, just completed similar sidewalk projects with vertical granite curb, I think the approximate number was 400 linear foot.
Yeah, but it was, it was, the, the price was, I talked to Glenn Ferguson, the price was between 4 and 450 linear foot, but that's a prevailing wage job. I asked him what it would be for a private job, and he estimated it to be about 350 is linear foot. So, the applicant is proposing what has been suggested by the town planner to achieve that for part of our public benefit. The only thing I would say is the clarification of across the street, Karen, you mean across the driveway to the Drew company?
No, I mean across the street.
Oh, to connect it across the street, yeah, yeah.
Right, if you're going to have, if you're going to do.
I got you.
A head, a crosswalk, then the other side of the street has a handicap accessible. It's already, it, it, I think it needs a detectable warning strip and probably a new concrete landing over there. We don't, I suggest that you let us work out the details of exactly how much that we can go out in the field, and we, we look at this and, you know, propose a solution, because Sean McCarthy and I went out there today, and we, there's a couple ways it could be done, because of the way that Drews did the sidewalk, and I think that we could all come to an acceptable agreement about how it could work and could look. I mean, it might be that the walkway has to jog in a little bit, but I think it's, I think it would be a benefit for the town.
You've been talking about before, before you did it much, but I just wanted to try and understand physically what we're talking about here. So we're talking going north?
Well, east.
Towards, we have, towards east.
Well, east, towards the harbor, right?
Yes, east, towards the harbor.
So it's at, from there end to connecting to where Drews finished the sidewalk, on that sidewalk.
Where they are, where they have a driveway.
Right, where the Drew's driveway is. That's the building up on the Drew property, and.
There's no sidewalk on the, oh, thanks.
Do you have an, I have a picture over here.
The, you're coming, so, if you look at our site plan.
That's from the Harvard.
Right, right. No sidewalk, they've got a sidewalk here, so that connects across, and then there's a, is there a crosswalk across, is that the idea?
There's, there's already a crosswalk at this intersection, it sounds like we'd be looking at doing a second crosswalk down here at the Drew company. I think that's to be determined in the field with DPW, but the intent would be, right now, our sidewalk comes down to, terminates at our property line, we would extend it from there across the Drew company frontage. What you see that they've constructed there, that's not technically a sidewalk, that's their ADA handicap access to that building. It wasn't intended as true sidewalks, so we'd be actually putting in vertical granite curb and extending the sidewalk there.
But just actual limits we would work out as, between now and when we write the decision, we would work out with the applicant how we thought it should be done, and come up with a number for the, for the cost of the sidewalk, for that. And that's what's okay to me, Mr. McLean?
Yeah, it'd be fine with me, just the sidewalk without the, without the crosswalk, just it seems like the. You have the crosswalk at the, at the, at the light, oh, you're not talking about a crosswalk, at the, in front of the Drew, in front of the Drew driveway.
Alright, so, we're probably, because it's not handicap accessible on the far side of the Drew driveway.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't necessarily want to put a crosswalk there yet. We've got to do the crosswalk across the Drew driveway when we make all this handicap accessible, because that's how DPW wants it, and then connect to the other side of the road, which there is already, people from life care just use the sidewalk a lot to walk down to, you know, but it's, it, it would be a good thing.
And the DPW is okay with another crossing?
Well, that's to be determined, that's to be determined.
On the, on the Driftway, it seemed like too close to the light.
That's to be determined.
Yeah, that was, that was the only question that I had, but I didn't.
I would say that's a con idea.
That's, well, that's, but that's, I don't know if you're. I mean, we can figure that out between now and when, you know, we write the decision, we'll all go out there, and we'll, you know, we'll work this issue through, because it is.
It just seems like we shouldn't encourage people to go across at uncontrolled crosswalk, and where there's one
Okay, right.
down the road that's got a light, right?
Well, so we may, we may not put that in, may not put that in, these were just ideas we brainstormed out there when we went out to look today.
So what we're really trying to do right now is maybe add a continuous sidewalk.
Right.
From right into the right.
It'll complete the loop from the Drew company, yeah, may not go across the street yet, depending on what they want to do, but it'll complete the loop.
A loop from the Drew. So that's why we're advising for all of us.
And we, we are willing to work with you.
Yeah, yeah, but Ken is grateful for the suggestion to look for an offsite public benefit. This is a great one that benefits both the property and the neighborhood here.
So, depending on the cost of that, on other projects, you've got 17.5 per unit for the density bonus. I would propose that the board let us work between now and the next meeting, come up with the cost of that, then the remainder be given for a project, for the town.
So you want to see how that works, right?
Yeah, so the 10 units, this would be kind of, I guess, if you take it off the 10 units, in other words, some, we get charged for E, we do that instead, one of those deals. You think it's going to be in the 40,000 dollar range, given whatever amenities are necessary to go with the sidewalk, and we're, we're fine with it, whatever it is.
So normally what we do is that for every density bonus, they give us a cash value of 17,500 dollars for all of that, and then that goes to what we feel is appropriate, what's needed in the town. What we're offering here is that 17.5 across the board, we will subtract the cost of the sidewalk and everything else to be determined amongst the town planner and yourselves, okay?
We are, we are, we are grateful for that condition.
Okay.
The board is also comfortable with that condition, with that, with that proposal?
Yes, yes.
And I think that's it for our, for that one, for the, for the density bonus, everyone is comfortable with the density bonus?
The density, yeah. Yes.
Would we vote in favor of a project with this as a condition or opposite?
So, let me just make sure I'm clear, so, are we just going to put a number on it now? Or are we going to wait to get the price, and then we'll reduce the density bonus value? That, how we're doing?
We're going to attempt to put a number on it in the next few weeks, based on actual feeling.
So we'll have a definitive number?
We'll put a definitive number in the decision, yeah.
Yep, yeah, that's fine.
So moving to the next special permit finding, it's Section 755b 2d, allowing the building to be in excess of 100 feet in length, proposed building is 180 feet in length along New Driftway width, should say width, length. So your bylaw, as you know, allows a building to be up to 150 feet wide, under this bylaw. Anything over 100 feet requires a special permit, anything 100 feet, under does not. So I request this for an eight foot, relief for eight feet. The eight feet wasn't necessarily intentional, it was just what, how the building felt, what Jamie designed it. I know that there has been discussions about the building, the feeling is that the building is just too big. I think that we need to remind ourselves of what's allowed under the bylaw. The bylaw allows for a zero front yard step back for a building like this. The bylaw allows for a building as big as 20,000 square feet, the footprint of the building can be 20,000 square feet. Our proposed building is 9,985 square feet. We could do a 20,000 square foot building, parking underneath, things like that, different amenities. So, and also, the, the, the fact that this, to ask ourselves, does this extra eight feet fit into the neighborhood? Which is what we're trying to regulate, right, in the village, neighborhood. We look around the neighborhood, and we look at buildings like, maybe the medical building, it's a large building, and so the buildings, the buildings right on the adjacent parking lot are 150 feet wide, they're 300 feet wide, and approved, and they're approved under a different bylaw, I get it, but.
But to remember that, that's a very good distinction.
It's not lost on me, but the point of the bylaw is to control the neighborhood, and that is part of our neighborhood. Maybe in a different bylaw, but it's the same neighborhood that we're, we're in now. So, and again, we're not asking for something that would, is not allowed under your bylaw, you have the authority to grant that eight feet. So nonetheless, we, we, we are sort of at the eight feet, we're asking the board for that small relief, other than, you know, over the 100 feet. The, you know, and I think it's important to also point out that with respect to the lot itself, this district has no minimum lot size for, for, for a development like this. So, we have a lot that's in the 34,000 square foot range. So, to, to suggest that this building is too big for the lot, that doesn't work either, because the lot would be much smaller, given the fact that it's, that there's no minimum lot size requirement for this project. So, the, the applicant feels that this is a well-designed building, the eight feet is necessary to make the building work in its shape, space, size, dimension, scale, mass. And we've requested that the board approve the minor increase in width of the building along New Driftway.
So you know, Mr. Gard, this is a, a, a big topic of discussion. This was presented to us last September, and it's been pointed out, not once, but many times, that the building is too big for the size of the project, it's too low for people on this board, and it was also known by Design Review. I understand, totally understand, that it's, it's a nice open building, it's a big building, it's a pretty small lot, the lot's for, what, 34,000 square feet? 34,722 square feet?
Yeah.
That's pretty small, and it's a big building, and I know that we asked you to reduce it, and you took out the penthouse. When I speak about big, it's not just height, it's also width and its length. So we need a straw vote on this board about this particular special permit at 108 square feet, with the notion in mind that we think the building is too big for the size of the lot. And that's no surprise to you. People need to know that there's not a lot of answer here, because it's right on the street. When you stop there, you want to see a lot of buildings. I was at another project the other night, when we had, the first time I've heard it spoken about down here, Urban Sprawl. Haven't heard that in a while, it's been a while since I've heard that. So, I need to know how the board feels on the rate of special permit for 108 feet. So, Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Burby?
No.
Mr. Pritchett?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lumber, no, but, we do too?
So I, I guess what I, if you would allow me to object, Jamie, what I'm having trouble with is, is understanding what part of the bylaw that we are not complying with. I need help, you, you tell me.
I know the building's too big, but we live by the bylaw, the citizens of the town of Sitewit pass that bylaw, languages, words matter when you look at bylaws.
The, the height of this building complies, the area of the building footprint complies, in fact, it's 50% of what is allowed. The width of that building is 108 feet on 253 feet of frontage. We have 253 feet of, just on that, just on that side of the house, so of the building. My problem is, is that I live by the bylaw, so I hear what you're saying, but I can't figure out what part of the bylaw I'm not complying with, so.
Okay, so let's have a conversation about.
Can, can we just, while you predate this conversation, like, we've done the straw vote on this special permit requirement. We all understand it's required, right?
Yeah.
So, we know where we stand on that, so, let's leave that out, and if you've got another piece you want to address, I would say.
I'm just requesting my, some guidance as to, you know, why it doesn't, emotionally, is not, you know, emotion doesn't enter into it if you're applying the legal bylaw to the project, so that's why I think.
So what you said just, Mr. Gard, is that every time we go for density bonus, everybody else goes for the maximum. That's just the way it goes.
But the maximum's 150 feet, we didn't mind that, we just went for eight feet.
No, no, I'm talking about, we're talking about buildings and whatnot, we're talking about density bonus, that kind of thing, everybody's always agreeing for the max.
Oh, we didn't go for the max.
I know, but it's into what we had to say.
Okay, sure.
So, in well, off the top of my head, I've thought a lot about this thing, about how big it is. We haven't made a definitive vote on this, and I could persuade B U A, you know, Mr. Burby is not perfect. I'm still, I'm still tired of, of what you want.
I'm hoping that I can convince you that the project complies.
So you don't have to convince me, you have to produce evidence that will convince me. I said before, I think this is a, a very nice building, I welcome to go with the crew board. I'm responding to what I hear people saying to me, and as an elected official, it's my job to then say the, the challenge.
Sure.
So, we can leave that where it is, so now we know right now where we see it going, yeah, so we can move along, okay?
Thank you, sure. So the, the listed, the next item listed on the agenda is a new issue. It's, it's a new old issue, it's been in John's report for a while, we've gone about the waterline easement that was actually, it was actually the old Driftway, back when that's actually what it used to run across this property, before they did New Driftway and connected it. I submitted to the board a selectmen a request for them to consider the relocation of the easement. They are the ones that control it, I was told that the planning board, they would do what the planning board recommends, so you are the gatekeeper for that issue. Greg has designed a plan that relocates the easement throughout the parking lot that we have, from entrance to entrance. It avoids any of the subsurface infiltration systems, and it avoids, there's a couple manholes, but that's normal for any, you know, it's not an exclusive easement, it's an easement that's shared with the property owner for the installation of utilities. There is no water line that's being relocated. It is unlikely that in the future this thing would ever be used, because we have public ways on a corner, they're not typically going to do that, they'll take up the public way. But nonetheless, the reason that we didn't ask the town to expunge or terminate or abandon the easement is because that requires a town meeting, the easiest way to deal with this, the selectmen have the authority to relocate it, we're good. I've done it before in other towns, it's much simpler.
So I'm giving Mr. George's guidance, I agree with that, that's, that's.
It's all, we put a copy of the revised plan in your packet, I think that this location.
This is a good thing.
This makes sense.
That, that's a good reason.
So we're all, we're done, because that is, um.
Oh, you gave us a revised plan.
I did, but the one I saw was kind of.
Yes, the revised plan, yes, I, I put the revised plan in your packets today, and.
That makes more sense.
So you see, we have.
No, that was my fault, no, that was totally my fault, when I sent out the letter to the selectmen, I sent a concept plan that we were working with, because I was trying to keep the easement in the same direction generally that it was already there, but Greg convinced me that that wasn't necessary, that the easement could go on right anywhere.
And then, like I said, we follow, get advice on that, and we went, that's fine, okay?
And what you say is that, is it's not exclusive?
Yeah, it just means that the property owner can put utilities in there too, they just have to.
But is there, if the town needs to use it, it's not going to be quote-unquote used up?
Yeah. No, couldn't be, yeah, okay, no. There wouldn't be enough, there wouldn't be enough underground utilities in there to close up 20 feet of space for a water pipe. The water pipe goes down four feet, I think what we have in there is not even that deep, right? We talked about that, as far as the location of the, the water pipe has to be five feet underground, so.
Is, if somebody uses it, and it's not the town, then you can notify the town?
If somebody uses.
The easement, if somebody else. The easement, if somebody else has access to the easement.
No, everyone's, the only person that could use that for is us, is because it's only the property, it's only to the town of Situate and and the property owner.
No, I thought you said it was not exclusive.
It's not exclusive between the property owner and the benefited party, the town of Situate, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's no other parties that have rights that, and I researched it back. No, it was when they deeded the property to the owner that bought a piece of land that had it through it, the town reserved the right to use that as a, you know.
Now who's ever told me?
It it, yeah, that was a long time ago, yeah, great, six nineteen sixty-something.
No, no, then it was two thousand five, I think, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was in the sixties when that got that intersection got reconfigured, so. The board is comfortable with that, they will recommend to the board of selectmen to allow us to relocate that easement. That will be necessary for them to take a vote on that issue, correct? Everybody's good with that, good, okay. Issues for board determination in addition to the above listed requests, let's see, ground floor residential uses, okay. So the residential units meeting required setbacks, the proposed residential lounge does not meet the required setbacks. The board should make a determination on this aspect of the residential use on floor four. Do you remember we reconfigured that little area to a residential lounge, it was gonna be the office for the rentals, and it interfered with the commercial aspect of it, so this is an internal component that the board has the authority to allow to exist within the sixty feet from the right of way for for the public way, provided that, Greg has the exact one, he's looking it up right now, provided that its allowance doesn't affect pedestrian aspect to the village. It's not even, it's not exposed to the outside, there's no access to this view to this area other than residents, it is o- only opens up within the building, so.
And Mr. Taylor, you put a drawing of that, we we saw that people the last meeting. Do you need to see that again, do I know that?
I'm sorry, the current architectural plan show that Karen, I talked to the assistant Billy Fisher today. That would be a residential use in the sixty-foot commercial area, so you all understand that.
Wait, wait, say that again.
It's a residential use in the sixty-foot commercial area. So that would require a waiver.
So if you remember that the bylaws says the sixty feet gap for the commercial residential, so that. And how far, Richard, that you said, how far, Richard, has it go, a lot, a little?
I would ask, gee, twelve feet is in this.
Hundred feet, twenty feet?
Twelve.
Okay. I think it's.
It it goes twelve feet into the commercial.
Yeah.
I'm gonna just pull it up.
So the planning board, it it and I understand Karen used the term waiver, but it uh section C two talks about the planning board making a determination. So the planning board would need to make a determination that the streetfront residential use, this little lounge area will not have an adverse impact on the continuity and vitality of the pedestrian-oriented streetfront uses.
You see, Karen, is that basically that one up here or that?
The white, the white period.
Is that what?
So the twelve feet of that is in the sixty-foot.
Correct, is that in sixty-foot lines as well?
So to rea- to re- to reiterate, the board would need to make a finding that the use of that little space as residential within that sixty-foot setback will not have an adverse impact on the continuity and vitality of the pedestrian-oriented street fronts. I would argue that it's totally located within the building, it's only acceptable by residential units, not a residential dwelling, it's just a lounge area for people to sit. Um and it's doesn't have any kind of access to the pedestrian oriented streetfront uses. Okay?
Okay, I have a problem, and this is my problem. Looking at this, and I don't know if this is the time to bring it up. We have three residences in the in the back. Always felt that when we have a mixed use, it should be all retail, commercial, with no residential component on first floor. And I understand that there are ways to tweak the bylaw, and it's all a matter of interpretation. But the thing that bothers me aside from that is, and maybe I'm ahead of the game, as far as the parking is concerned?
Yes, you are.
I find that I will hold that in evidence until we get to the parking.
So did, what's the decision here, which decision is fine, it's fine?
Yeah.
I'll make a finding that, okay.
No comment.
No comment.
Mr. Pritchett, I have a.
Yeah. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is density involved standards, the board will need to review this proposed project relative to the density bonus. But we've, I think we've already talked about.
I think we've already talked about that.
Thank you. I was like, what do we need to talk about that? Development site standards, the board should review this screening and plantings, the board may also want to be screened for you, the right by proposed landscape. I would encourage to Greg on that.
So Mr. Moss, as you know, um in in my time here, landscape would always come secondary, and we would really like it to be in the forefront because it always kind of get pushed to the back, they're just kind of put stuff, we feel like what to get. Um and we know it's detrimental to do that because there's not enough screening. And then they can't go back and do it because they can't go over the driveway or they can't go through a wall, so we would like to see full landscape plans, please.
We submitted a full landscape plan, verified registered landscape architect, when we submitted this last July. We've had four or five public hearings at this point, I haven't received any negative comments or any requests to change any of the landscaping. You can see the landscaping in this plan, we do have rather thick screening of the parking lot areas. We have internal landscaping in the parking area. We have street trees along new driftway. This plan specifies everything, you have had this now for almost a year. The trees, we have thirty-three plus eight plus eight, so you have approximately fifty trees proposed at the site. Shrub plantings along the front, uh three gallon size along the front of the building, you have eleven um of junipers along the front. Perennials plantings, you have lavender uh along the front, you have one gallon, one and a half gallon sizes, you have uh twenty-eight of those, you also have seventeen different ornamental grasses throughout the site. We haven't received any technical comments regards to any of the species or any of the locations, but you've had this now since July.
So I'm, I'm gonna have to reply my inner vent, which I I don't know how he says this. One of those trees plaguing it not boxes, correct, is this what that's been given us?
They these, I I've I reviewed the landscape plan today. The landscape plan is reasonable, it's not gray, it's stamped but not signed. But I do like the fact that they're proposing three-inch caliper trees. Three-inch caliper trees are are gonna be good, I mean, um some of the other projects are, I think our reds only require two and a half. Three inch is is a is a step up. It it it's it's acceptable, it's not, it's not good, it's not gonna look great, um it's not gonna look bad. Um I think that there's very, very minimal landscaping in that entry courtyard. And it's really too bad that there's not a tree there. But they do have some, they do have some stuff on the inside of the wall which will be very helpful. Low stuff will be very helpful.
So I am going to go back to the beginning of January twelfth, because I just spent all day today reading all about meeting minutes, that's what I did. And one of one of the comments that was made is that it's very austere and it's not natural. And it doesn't like approach to the formal being, so. As we know, this area is getting pretty more industrial, although we don't want to say that word here, it's a city. And remember, this is Situate, you're not going to a women's yet. So we need to make every effort possible to soften that site as much as we can, and we've had this conversation for since at least January that I know of. All of that sounds really nice, but you know, the proof is in the pudding, so at some point in our decision, it's gonna be that we have the right to go back, yes, not in time, and check on those plating, which we do for every project, is that appropriate, Karen?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the trees, obviously, everything has to be living at the end of the project, and usually there's a one one to three year guarantee period, and so everything needs to be living at the end. And it's quite possible that, you know, after tenants are in there, they might try to add more um more landscaping in the courtyard, the entry courtyard to make it more um less austere.
Human, human element.
But it 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 meets the bylaw.
So it meets the bylaw, and we will be checking it for one to three years to make sure that everything is living, as was the truth, you know, we lots of projects and things die all the time. We are awash with water now come August, but we dry as a boat, so we know how that goes, okay?
Of course, we would expect you to do that. No female ginkgoes.
No, we're not having that conversation. I'm not doing that.
Expect this Princeton century ginkgo, which is a male ginkgo, it's fruitless.
You're not doing that, Mr. McLean.
Share the emotion. Alright, so the the.
You missed out on a sex education question.
I apparently I did, I'm sorry, I missed out, what meeting was that, I go back.
You missed, I go to the face.
The beauty of recorded meetings.
Yes.
Okay, so my understanding is that we are comfortable with the landscape plan as it complies with the bylaw, there will be a growing period required probably in the decision. That's fine with us, uh parking is required, uh okay. The next one on the list there is parking requirements, as you as you may recall, the there was some concern about, Greg, oh, it's on the plan now, you just went. So there was some concern about the sort of dead-end parking spots in the to the right of the building. We added a small turnout space just for maneuvering purposes uh to allow that, and it's been noted by John, this turnout parking space, the board should use this aspect, it's the closest uh to the driveway. So it it is inside fifteen feet by approximately five feet, just to allow the cars to maneuver. The board should, I think I'd like to remind the board that this was not something that we we required, it's not required under the parking plan that we have. The parking plan was acceptable to both the peer review engineer as well as our engineer. As it existed prior to this addition, we have a twenty-foot wide, twenty-four-foot wide um aisle in sufficient maneuvering. The concern of the board with being able to back out and make that turn. So understanding that, we put a small area of pervious pavement inside that little fifteen-foot setback from the street. So the fifteen-foot puffers at that particular juncture is eleven, we're happy to keep it there, if the board has an issue with it, we can take it out because the parking plan complies, it was reviewed by John, and there was no comment relative to this particular addition. We added this simply for the, because the board brought it up as a concern, we're happy to do it. If it is an issue for that reason, we're happy to take it out.
I didn't think it was pervious.
Uh it is, it is pervious.
You're maybe, you're making it pervious?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're making it pervious, okay.
That's, we'll get to the, that one's coming up too, so.
Yep, that one's coming up.
That one's coming up too.
Alright, is that.
Good news on that too.
Okay, so Ian, you could, uh, say your first word.
Alright, my concern has to do with, or he stated as far as retail versus commercial. But I look at the plan for the first floor.
Uh I'm sorry, are we okay with the turnout thing, I I.
No, no, we're not.
Oh, oh, that has to do with this, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, okay.
Yes, it does, okay.
Okay.
My, uh, the issue here that I have is, in memory serves me correctly, but it's not necessarily the case, that when we talked about this parking lot at the last meeting, parking spaces directly to the right of the of the building for the residents.
Yes.
Yet, when I look at this plan and you have a covered entrance that goes into the foyer, okay? If the residents park along the right-hand side, they have to walk, have to walk around to the back of the building in order to access their residential area. I have a problem with that, plus it's not covered, plus the fact you have all of these parking spaces on both sides of that driveway.
Okay.
Okay, it it, let me finish, please, 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 I'm trying really hard to be, okay?
Yeah, okay, all night we have to do.
They know it right. And this, well, I I find this parking even with this itty-bitty little turnout inadequate. And it's something that Rebecca said at the last meeting as well, which resonated with me. There is, where it, you have, you're required to have forty spaces based on the square footage, the apartments, whatever, and retail, et cetera, et cetera. What if they have guests, where do they park? Where do the people that work in these retail spaces and these offices, where do they park?
There's a lot of what if in the board.
But that's what we have to deal with, Mr. Gaskin, that's what we give.
Yeah, I think my comment would be that, you know, the the bylaw itself has contemplated those traffic concerns, and that's why the bylaw has determined that we are required to have forty spaces for the uses that we proposed on the plan. So I I don't want a second guess to bylaw. With respect to the parking, John has reviewed the parking. We we've had a traffic engineer that was peer reviewed by the town, we had our own traffic engineer here from VNS that has also reviewed the access to the parking, so I think that we've got it pretty well nailed down for the for the parking.
Well, you know.
And we said parking.
Excuse me, Steve, may I?
Could I finish what what he qualified as?
Yeah, I'm. Okay.
And the parking we said was dedicated to the residents.
Yeah, that that's, it's on the plan, there's signs that.
They'll have numbers on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a company that did the same thing, they have signs that say resident only, they will have numbered spaces, so people aren't going in there, they're door in there for their spaces.
Okay, so, but Ian does have a valid point, so go ahead, because we hear this all the time, that there's no place for guests to park, we're hearing that more and more.
Yeah.
Aside from that.
That could be, you know.
Why can the residents not enter from where they're parking?
Is there an entrance on that side there, just like one or two, just don't enter?
No, no, they have to go all the way down to the very end of the building, and they can go to the stairs from there. But that makes no sense to me, not at all. The other thing that I see with this parking area, you have um uh where a delivery truck would be, and if you park a delivery truck depending upon the sign, if somebody wants to exit out that driveway and there's somebody parked directly next to it in that allowable parking space, we're gonna have a tough time getting out. If they're in an SUV or a Suburban, I'm like, is that great?
Yeah, that would be a great question.
How much, how much is that?
That drives way in the way out is a minimum with twelve feet, we have done the traffic analysis on it, we provided the turning templates, that layout does work.
Does it work if a delivery truck is parked to deliver and there's a car parked opposite, how much room is there between those two?
A minimum of twelve feet, yes, it works.
I have another question, um the sign, the sign is gonna be at the beginning of that um loading day. Well, what about, that's gonna say residence only?
Yeah.
Well, what about if you have a handicapped person who wants to use the business, the handicap parking is there?
Right.
And the EV parking is down there too.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem fair to the business users either, how are you gonna supply handicap parking for the business users?
Yeah, the signage would work around the handicap spaces for sure, absolutely. If we locate it in a way that would not allow, you know, we would still make the handicap spaces available, right, Greg, I mean, that would be the plan.
Yeah, of course, the handicap spaces are available for anyone.
They're not designated, no.
Those are not designated spaces, no.
No, but you have a sign that's gonna say residents only.
Well, why don't you put a sign there that says, and handicapped, you know, parking.
Okay, so that, I'm just clarifying, that the sign, the sign will say.
No, I think that, I think that makes sense, right.
Whatever, whatever the board wanted the sign to say, we'll say, we're happy with that.
I mean, that nothing's gonna be exactly perfect here in terms of signage and everything, unless you, you know, along the roads and all that. But I think you could put, you could put signage in there to make it accessible.
Yeah, they're making, cause they can make some type of condition to that, yep, they put those arrows on the road and they still go the wrong way, I don't understand.
And you're never gonna.
Again, really need to think about a hallway that for your regional space and your commercial space, and you have residents parked all along here. Where are other people going to park that want to use that space, okay? And again, if the residents are parked all along, handicapped out with standards, they still have to, and if they're handicapped, they have to go all the way around and into the back to come in. I really think that is a design issue, and as far as I'm concerned, it's a huge flaw.
I think we could solve that fairly easily. We felt it was an issue because the main reason of separating residential from commercial is to sort of keep general public out of the residential. It's keyed access, we don't want people going up the elevator or the stairs. But adding a door to the residential lounge from the commercial corridor will allow keyed access from that side so that residents could go into main door as well, I'm sure we'd be willing to make that modification.
To me, that makes sense.
That makes sense, I agree. So can we note that that could matter?
Sure. So. Getting back to the bump out for the maneuvering area. Where are we on that?
It's too small.
But are we okay with it being in the fifteen foot?
What, what's, what um, set that dimension? How is that just for?
I think you just, Greg, that's how far you'd have to back up to make that turn.
In the driving truck.
For a passenger.
I tell you, I would almost rather have to stick with that dimension. You know, just taker things to the corners or something instead of create a sharp turn. Just maybe.
Yeah, I, I.
Sign is gonna have to come out of turn.
I, you know what, Steve, I suggested, I, I wasn't sure how that worked, the radiuses and how to pretend. Greg had a reason because I brought that up to my question, because then you have a little bit more backing space.
I mean, it's better than not having any space. It's better than not having.
It's, listen, again, it's not required for, you know, the, the parking.
If that was your slot anyway.
Yeah, but, but I'm, yeah, that was your slot.
So the backup space isn't a requirement in the bylaw anywhere. You'll note that the true company doesn't have one on the property immediately next door to us. It was requested by this board, we added it. That's the size that's typical for a passenger car application such as this. Uh, we didn't feel that it was an issue going into the fifteen foot landscape buffer. Because the landscape buffer language of seven sixty point eight P one A, which is on page one seventy eight. Says that fifteen feet is to a parking space. Obviously, to get it out of a parking lot, you need access through that fifteen foot landscape buffer with your aisles, with your driveway. The bylaw has a definition of parking space and it's where you can park a vehicle. It's not where you maneuver or turn around a vehicle. We would gladly accept the condition that we won't park a vehicle in the turnaround area. The turnaround isn't required in the bylaw to comply with a fifteen foot setback. I would add also that this location here is unique in the fact that we're measuring the fifteen feet to the edge of the right of way. From the edge of the right of way to the back of the sidewalk is close to an additional ten feet. Then you have a five foot sidewalk. That turnaround from the edge of the traveled way is in excess of twenty four feet from the actual road. I didn't see that fifteen feet was applicable uh, for that setback in that section of the bylaw. Uh, I feel that it's adequate for turnaround. It was added at the crest of this board.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, at least I'm not questioning that we have a pop out. I think we should. I was just asking how we set the dimension.
Yeah, that's, that's typical at the end of the, of an aisle for a residential application such as this.
That means, that means whatever standard is, it's okay.
So Ms. Slaver, would you mind asking the members of the board, so we're, are we okay with this?
So, yeah, are we okay? Rebecca?
Yeah.
Yes? No.
We're one. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is parking space on gross floor area and all around the residential space, which has noted that we include any area within the required setback from the street line. Calculations are key consistent with this aspect. I am unfamiliar with the, what this actually means, the aspect, okay? You can speak on that.
So for the parking area requirements, we looked at the floor areas of the um, inhabited commercial uses, the office space, the uh, retail space, et cetera. This is asking us to take into account, for example, the janitor's closet toward the parking calculations. We didn't feel that that was applicable in this case. That it should be based off of the actual area that you're renting out as commercial space that would be habitable and would create a traffic need. Those uses that don't create a traffic need, again, the closet spaces, we probably could back out.
Do you want to speak on this issue? Mr. Chester, you may.
Yeah. So, the way that the bylaw, you put exterior wall, exterior wall, so that's the way I interpret it.
One square feet.
One square.
Does everybody bring it up?
I, I thought, well, I was just talking to Greg, I thought we had this conversation last time about maybe John could weigh in on it too. That we excluded spaces that were nonhabitable. Under the bylaw, as the definition talks about habitable space, so we, we felt that a janitor's closet.
We did have this closet.
Yeah, okay, I, I was forgetting whether we did or not. So that's why, that's how we came up with the calculation.
This is how it was calculated on other projects in the district.
So, is the board satisfied with the parking calculation based on the gross floor area? Non-residential space excluding the habitable space of closets and janitor, but.
Okay, I guess that's four to one.
Four to one or be five to zero? There you go. Uh, lower impact design standards, which would do as many, uh, may have species, that's it.
Now, again, the landscaping plan was put together by a registered landscape architect. This is what he felt was appropriate for the site. We haven't heard any slants, any changes.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, yeah, it's more important this stuff lives.
I mean, yeah, that's what, that's my. He just wants stuff that's gonna live there as opposed to something that's just a little rather.
We've addressed seven fifty one point three earlier, correct?
Yes, yes.
As well as the next one, reviewing the general landscape design.
Yes, hello, I'm visiting a signature, did you say Karen? Yeah, it's not signed, the landscape architect is not signed.
We will get that assigned as soon as we can. Put that on the notes.
Yeah.
Board should make a finding regarding the parking area turnout, which is, alright, we just did that. Amenity space. Space standards. Amenities space, Karen, just list the amenity space, that's not relevant to seven fifty two. So five eighty point six amenity space. We discussed that in the past, uh, mostly on the roof. I guess the park, the patio or the front. For, if the board have any issues with what was presented on the amenity space. As we modified throughout this process to satisfy the board.
So could you just give us a quick overview, there's a lot of people here. Can people watch us on the Q and A, I don't think yet.
Sure, so the requirement is, is that twenty percent of your project, your lot area. Be counted as amenity space for your residents. We are proposing twenty and a half percent as amenity space that is made up of three areas. Picnic benches over on the side and a common yard space. Outdoor patio space along the front of the building. Uh, and outdoor dining or seating terrace, if you will. And then on the architectural plans, up on the top level, we have an outdoor uh, roof deck on the top level, which is open to the residents of the building. In total, the requirement for amenity space is six thousand nine hundred forty five square feet. We're proposing seven thousand one hundred and thirty four square feet. Uh, which again complies with the twenty percent minimum requirement.
Alright, so I think that it's kinda hard to tell the architectural plans for rooftop terrace are they set back five feet from the building walls with the four foot perimeter fence? That's, that's required. So that needs to be put on the architectural plans and the space re, the number reaffirmed.
So could I ask you, now, yeah, I should know, is, is our ownership not regular support?
Uh, well, again, we didn't, we haven't decided, I think that we're definitely leaning towards the rentals, but again, it's, it's, it's designed for both options at this stage. Again, it's still a little.
So the, the reason I say that is that, um, so if we wanna have a residence in an amenity space on the roof. Um, let's pretend we are living in Cambridge or Brighton, if only. Um, and what are you gonna bring up yet and who is responsible for that? So if you were an ownership, this would be an HOA building. And you, you would have a board of trustees that would make sure that all this stuff. So someplace in our decision, ask, we suddenly written about who is responsible for that? That's gonna be a huge issue, a safety issue for us.
I would think that you'd pose that burden on the landlord, the owner of the property. Will be responsible for any common areas, the management control them like you would condo association, like HOA.
Just so that we're perfectly clear about this, that, you know.
Yeah, I would, I would think that would fall squarely on that. And they have the right to delegate that in their reasons to the tenants, but the ultimate, their answer is to you.
Yeah.
The tenants can answer to them, but they answer to you.
Yeah, so like I said, just so that people know that issue go and people have the rooftop. Yes, it's gonna, you know, let's remember it's really windy down there and. We have fire, I mean, we're behind fire scenes here right now, so um, people need to be very mindful of what they bring up there and that they have to check. Kinda like when you go to the beach, what you bring, you have to bring home. That's kinda how that goes. So someplace in the decision or something, it has to be something about that rooftop deck that it has to be clear of stuff that does not fly. And like, no umbrella is gonna, gonna blow me off flying into, I don't know, hammer rock someplace.
Yeah, you recall last time, Jamie, the design, there's, there's a kind of a dead space that you can't use.
There's gonna be lockers, right?
Yeah, there'll be like a storage space on the fourth floor, accessible by the fourth floor for things like, you know, furniture.
And, yeah.
Time to store.
To decide who is responsible in the case of store, who is gonna do that.
Yeah. I, I would think that a building of this size will likely have a management problem, who will take on? They would, they'll hire man, the landlord's not gonna deal with tenant issues, but they'll hire managers to cover it.
Again, whereas we wouldn't worry about that, like, where if we could only have a whole property.
Absolutely.
Responsible.
But for purposes of, you know.
Whoever they hired to do this.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's up to them.
But you're gonna need a, you would likely need an onsite representative. I would think you'd wanna contact person that would report to the planning department as to who is, you know, who do you take, who do you, who do you make emergency call? Yes, you still. We're happy to provide that information when we get to that point.
So is it, I mean, is the correct area on the roof? I mean.
Yes, I mean.
So you'll, you'll dimension the five feet and you'll show the four foot.
Oh, yeah.
Around their fence in accordance with the zoning law? Okay, and so just while we're on the subject of rental condo. I mean, it kinda makes it hard for me to write a decision if I don't know which way it's gonna go. I, I guess I'll do it, I'll guess I'll write it both ways, you know, condo docs and um, other stuff.
I think, I hate to be gone middle, but I, I think we probably should to protect, yeah, to make it. John says it's rent.
It's gonna be rental.
It's gonna be rent.
Yeah, and every unit will be able to go against the four D numbers. And John, we give it a hundred percent, my fault. It gives you twenty two units of affordable housing, which everybody knows. The forty B's have come on with you, like it or not, and this'll help keep them away.
Well, I'll argue that with town council, because I'm not aware that every unit is going to town.
I think, yeah, I think if it's.
Um, but I argue that with town council.
Yeah, I think if they're rental, they all.
But this is not a forty B, this is approved under a local action unit.
Because they're rental, they apply it.
I will double check with town council.
Does it need mass housing underwriting?
Excuse me?
If they need mass housing underwriting standards, I'm sure the bylaw does, they would go towards the.
So, um, just, just to clarify then, we're not writing dual standards here?
Right, we're not writing, no, we're gonna show that it's a rental, rental um, property, so it'll have some type of property management unit. But not, um, it won't, the condo docs won't have a name, you know, or organization.
We don't know how much they're gonna write for, so we don't know that, okay?
So it's fair to confirm that the board is satisfied with the amenity spaces on site as proposed, they modified.
As long as you fix the.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll do the roof to show the fence and the five foot setback. So the next one says, board should review comment of the amenity space that's under seven fifty two, that's the same. Uh, five eighty point seven public ground, public ground standards, board reviews, no, no relative to public ground issues. What are the issues for public ground?
I really don't have any, I mean, you have a throughway zone, you're not creating a new street, you're putting the five foot sidewalk. I think that that's, you know, you're not, they're not creating a new street. So, doing the five foot sidewalk like DPW wants with the vertical grid curb, that's acceptable.
So portable housing, the next section would be five eighty point eight, portable housing requirements, fair housing affordability standards, board should review this issue.
Who, had you decided on a monitoring agent yet, that's gotta be important for us to know.
We did, it was the one that has been used in situ in the past few projects. I listed it in the, that was submitted before the last meeting.
Alright, so you're gonna use Metro West Collaborate?
Yes, I contacted them and they were on board, they sent me the questionnaire that they sent before all projects.
Alright, so you have five affordable units.
Right.
And are they all eighty percent AMI? Or are you doing any less than eighty percent AMI?
Yeah, we had discussed this issue for.
I think we had proposed sixty percent. But I, I think that's what we proposed. We were eighty percent, you guys wanted sixty percent.
No, we had suggested that that could be, uh.
Yeah, we had proposed eighty percent, you guys had suggested sixty percent, we were sort of dug in on the eight percent. Of the value, right? Am I getting that correct? Is that?
That's, that's correct.
Are you at eighty or sixty?
Eighty.
We're at eighty.
Eighty.
Yeah.
So all your five units are gonna be eighty percent AMI?
Yeah.
Okay.
Better if it were sixty, but that's okay. That's a new concept at the time, I know.
Yeah, no, and, and I understand that my. We talked about it last time.
Alright, so technically, you know, I will write this out that you need a waiver from this requirement because you didn't submit all the, all the required information. But you've got a monitoring agent, so that's, we're gonna, that's acceptable. That's what everyone else has been doing. So that seems acceptable. Do you have a signed contract yet?
No.
Are you?
And only because I don't think I, I got, I got the back from them, although, yeah, I don't think I was.
Alright, but you're working to, towards a signed contract?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
So that wraps up step five eighty, affordable housing, I don't think there's any questions. There, the board is comfortable with the monitoring agent, eighty percent AMI, and then the next is cyclone. Seven seventy cyclone. We got, would you consider the design review more common? I think we have, we've submitted those.
And so you're familiar, you're, we will condition that design, you have to go back to design review. Um, what we know, locations of utilities and mechanical equipment. Um, and for detailing of exterior materials, that'll be written in as a condition.
We expected that condition.
Okay.
Board should review access and amenities in the frontage area. So. We didn't, we talked about that in the past, but I think if you want another, like, if you want pressure on the access and amenities. The access and amenities in the frontage area, like, you know, Jamie and Greg can go with the patio and.
It, it is what it is, you know, and it's, it's kind of right up there with your face. We'd like it to be a little softer, we'd make our points very clear.
Right.
Seems like at some point we have to have a meeting in the minds, you know, there's always so much you can do there. It's, it's kind of a, an open space.
Yeah, it's kind of small, on the corner.
And it is very small.
Elevated, elevated space too, it's elevated, you know, smoking and stuff, but it is, it is pervious, you know, patio.
Alright, I do have an issue here that we need to talk about. Okay, okay, so the plans now indicate that there's twenty three percent um. Imperious in the front yard. Except the plans show that the concrete sidewalk is included in that area. I think, I think that that needs to, I think the graphic needs to change. So I'd like the, I'd like the verification of what is actually pervious and impervious in the front yard, re-verified. And is the owner aware that the O and M plan says you vacuum the pervious pavement, the pervious asphalt every month? Vacuum it and you clean it. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that right now, that's the two major entryways into this site are the porous asphalt. And that's what you have to do for maintenance. So, is everybody aware of that?
So, at the board recalls, this was a sticking point last time because we couldn't meet that twenty five percent pervious surface in the front yard. Setback for um, walkways, uh, patios and driveways. Remember, Mr. Fisher had a, had, had a great concern for that, so.
Why you couldn't meet it.
Yeah, well, you know, if you recall, we get, we get kind of penalized because we have the town's sidewalk on our property, so.
That's why we asked you for the square footage of the sidewalk. And I don't, didn't really see the square footage of the sidewalk, the, in relationship to the rest of the plan.
Yeah, so what we did was, instead of, I, I don't, we're pretty good to calculate the square footage of the sidewalk. What Greg and I did was we sat down, we colored the areas that we knew we had to be affected by this twenty five percent rule. Only the, the, the rule is that driveways, walkways and patios cannot be pervious, impervious, that cannot exceed twenty five percent of that space. So we took out, basically, all we, we made everything on our site that we control, um, pervious. The driveways, the patio was already pervious, our site, our, our connection to the sidewalk, our little entrance, entrance ways are all pervious. The only thing we didn't change was the town sidewalk, because it's the town sidewalk. I mean, we backed, we, that's not backed out of the calculation, it's part of the calculation. So we met the twenty five percent with just the town sidewalk. So we made everything else pervious. So I, I guess you could say, Greg, the town sidewalk is about twenty five, it's under twenty five percent of our front area pervious. It's like twenty three point something, whatever.
So, yeah, the town sidewalk, um, and the other existing impervious on the site right now is twenty eight point six percent. We're leaving the town sidewalk, but then any new surface within the front yard setback that we're proposing is impervious material. So we are ready to get that down to twenty three and a half percent.
Right.
Um, in that case.
So basically, we took, we left the town sidewalk pervious, impervious, and then we just made our stuff pervious and we came up with, it's twenty three percent. So we make the twenty five.
What else would you preach to that's susceptible, is that what you're concerned?
Well, that's the required requirement.
Yeah, we made it, we were able to make it. I, I didn't think we could.
I think the thing Karen points out about maintaining all of this pervious.
Yeah, it, it does.
You're buying that, right?
Hence why we were trying to avoid it in the first place, but we acquiesced to comply with the bylaw, we understand it as a maintenance requirement. I did, I was at another meeting and Pat Brennan actually gave a good speech about, gave a good talk about pervious asphalt in the parking lot, and it's amazing how the water runs right through it, just, so it does work.
It has to be clean.
But it does have to be clean, if it gets clogged, he didn't think it needed to be every month, but whatever they recommend, the manufacturer recommends, we'll have to do. That's what's in it.
A likely problem as a plus of, there it is, it's just so light over below, it's like.
Totally agree, yeah, it was, whatever they recommend, we'll have to do, but it does work when it's not clogged. So that is, let's see, so we're comfortable with that. I'm happy that we brought that up because that was an issue that we had requested a waiver in the past for that, and we threw that waiver. The board is satisfied with that front yard calculation, I believe, no objections? Seeing none, we'll move on to the, would you review the proposed lighting? So where do we go?
We had submitted a photometric plan on the site. I think it specified dark sky compliant lighting, down lighting on the, on the property. I wasn't aware of any outstanding issues with it.
Does that make it a new driveway?
Is it all illegal?
It is, it's all illegal lighting.
Does that make it a new driveway? Now you had to move the driveway?
We had to turn around, I believe it does have that driveway on it. The only thing I don't think it has is the turnaround. If I'm mistaken, I will get you an updated one.
Oh, can you, we can talk on that, I couldn't find an updated plan, that's why I'm asking.
So the drive.
How is the driveway illuminated?
The driveway is illuminated, it has these light poles on the exterior of the parking lot that light the parking lot.
Well, I worry that you go away somebody else's driveway.
We have a parking lot next to one of us, which is.
Well, as you say, so we can do it, but we don't want to light up the empty one either, so that's what I'm thinking.
So last time we also talked about ballards, are there any getting ballards at the at the edge of the residential parking?
Yeah.
I, I do remember a conversation, I don't know if they made it on the plan.
No.
We could certainly show those on the plan and we revise the.
Yeah, we wouldn't, no, I don't, because at the, at the edge of the residential parking, we have a vertical curve. So there's a six inch curve along the sidewalk around the building. So that serves as a, as a wheel stop, as a preventer, if you will. We did not have a wall into that location.
I didn't stop on the Derby Street.
Sure.
I mean, so I'm just, we asked you to consider it, and considering it, if there was going to be light at that level too, just let us, let us know.
Where would the ballards go? Would they be headed, are they against the back?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, we'll have Greg look at that, but everyone's comfortable with the proposed lighting plan. Caveat would be we'll get Karen a plan that shows the driveway if it's missing. I think we can move on from that.
We're okay with the ballers.
Yeah, well, Greg will look at the ballers and see what we can fit in.
Disturbing angry world we live in, we have to prepare perfectly.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. So hearing no objections to the proposed lighting plan or any comments from board of peer review consultant? Move on to, it is unknown, DPW comments including water and sewer department issues have been addressed, so it's unclear if those have been addressed. Greg, I think we've got.
We've gotten the water and sewer study completed that was submitted to the planning board, DPW. Water and sewer department got copies of those, and all recommendations of those I expect will be included in your conditions of approval.
Kevin, good with that? We'll have any questions?
So can I just make a general comment to people who will yell at us all over Facebook? Um, generally, all this building going on, we are not the water commissioners. If DPW and what is likely to tell us there's water, we have to say okay. Everybody knows that. We know that we are, we are not on water, and it's not out of decision. Okay, so everybody knows that. Whenever y'all are here, we know that.
So that having been said, the board has no comments about the water and sewer department issues they've been addressed, we're all comfortable, we're moving on. I think at this point, section nine stormwater amenity performance standards, I'm gonna turn it over. Greg, you want to run down the punch list of proposed items, and that will get close to wrapping up.
Sure, as you've heard, and as you know from other projects, this is an area that is relatively deep groundwater, it's very gravelly. We're proposing all subsurface infiltration, yeah, we're taking everything, putting it through catch basins, particle separators and recharging it under the parking lot. Mr. Chesey has done a pretty extensive review of it. He does have a couple of final recommendations, if you will, in his latest letter. They all seem appropriate to be conditioned, you know, inspections of the bottom of the hole when we do the infiltration chambers, not a problem. Adding, I think there's two catch basins where it's recommending that we have gutter inlets or curb inlets inside of the curving of those catch basins, not a problem, that's easy to do. Other than that, I think he would agree that we comply with all of the water quality standards, the pre and post rates of development. I believe stormwater is really all wrapped up at this point.
So the other condition, uh.
Yes.
Soil prior to construction.
Yes.
Confirmation, now it's probably out of the size.
Yes, they are.
Mr. Chesey, do you want anything you'd like to tell us?
I think you did pretty good going through them. The best thing I did was just give you those two pages, saved me a lot of extra work.
Thank you.
I think this was the major issues. I just wanted to verify, you used the new setback step back in your seven seven point four percent. Okay, because the plans, the site plans, they're totally old stuff. So that's why I just wanted to verify that. Is there intention to do revise plan set, revise architectural set with the things we've added for tonight?
So I think you could do it one of two ways. You could issue an approval and then we add the approval as extra pages to the plan set, and we could incorporate those requested changes or conditions right onto that set of plans. Or we could do an interim set at this point. I've done it both ways.
What is the board want?
I'm fine if you can condition it all and it gets resubmitted. If that, that works for you, I mean, it's more.
So if we do it, if we do it the second way, we just condition everything, and then everything gets added prior to endorsement.
Correct, yeah, it has to be prior to endorsement.
Right, prior to endorsement, it gets, so that's what the board wants?
Uh, I'm fine with that, if you, if you think it's easier for you to do it the other way, then I would suggest you do it the other way because Karen's got a big workload to put all these decisions, we've got other things going on, not just this.
I mean, I wouldn't want the architectural plans to show that this amenity space is five feet back from the edge with the fence. I don't see that there, and I want the square footage, make sure it's right, so I would prefer a revised set of plans.
So that's the way to do it. We'll do it that way. Come on, we'll just do it that way. Yeah, we'll do the revised set of plans.
That easier.
Yeah.
So Mr. Chesey, are there also Karen, anything else?
No, I think we've covered, I think we've covered the issues we've given you.
So just, just your one issue that you just brought up about percentages, the delayed setback, that'll be in the revised set too.
Yeah, I put that as a note, yes, we will update the step, the step back regulations.
Okay, sorry about that.
Mr. Chesey, you have anything to add?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now I want to open it up to the public, if you speak, please tell me your name and your address, speak very loudly and clearly, we'll do the work for us, and then we'll go to Zoom. Is there anybody in the room that would like to say anything? Make any comments? Yes, sir.
I live in Green Bush, forty-nine Cucky Way, Danuture. I have a lot of business up over the bridge, very close to the property. And I've been through these situations myself, developed property, I just want to say, I mean, a lot of this is opinion based. There's a lot of bylaws, there's a lot of hoops and hurdles that have to be gone through. And the bottom line is we need housing. It sounds like a good project, maybe it looks big compared to some projects. It certainly doesn't look big to someone right next door, you know, it's reasonable in my mind.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sue Dower, my husband and I have lived here for about twenty years, so I guess we're kind of newbies.
Can you address, please?
Sixteen Northley Farm Road.
Oh, yes.
So we are just off to Rotary and one twenty-three, so we sort of consider the Driftway our neighborhood. I will make a disclosure that Mr. Chessey built our home, and that is one of the reasons that he'll be here from Boston. It's an awesome neighborhood that he created, the buildings are beautiful, top quality. My husband and I are trying to downsize, but we can't because the house is so lovely and the neighborhood is so wonderful. There's hardly anywhere for us to go. But I am here to talk about the particular building. When my husband and I first moved here, the Driftway was a little shallow. And I think we've been happy with the development that has come up. The new gas station area there that took over the glass warehouse and all of that, it looks fabulous, it's wonderful. There are parking issues there, but you know what, with a little patience, you deal with it and people maneuver it. I am happy with the design that they've come up with. You guys are the experts, whether it's a hundred feet too big or whatever, I can't mess with that, that's your purview. But I think the design is lovely, it fits with the town. I am thrilled that it has a lot of sideways access that will come with it. I'm also on the Friends of Situate Dog Park and helped build the dog park, so anything that adds sidewalks and, you know, access in that area to me is a positive. I appreciate, you know, what you were discussing, and I think it's very interesting about the the parking for the residents that live there. I come from Boston, so parking is always the crazy issue. Everything is gonna be tight, but people make it work. I understand the comment about, you know, what if a truck pulls up or whatever? I live in a neighborhood where Amazon trucks are there four times a day. You give it sixty seconds and you have a little patience and, you know, it works out, people can get where they're going. But, you know, I do like the design, I do feel it fits with what I feel is my greater neighborhood. You know, I'm disappointed that the eye doctor property has been there in the corner for so long and looks so nasty. You know.
That's also being.
That's coming to.
That's coming to.
Right, so I, I think this is all, it's all a positive, so again, if it's a little big, that doesn't matter to me, I would still use it, I would like driving by it, I think it adds to the greater neighborhood, it certainly, you know, would add to our neighborhood and access to some commercial businesses. We do use the convenience store and the sandwich place that's, you know, there, so, you know, I, I think it's a positive thing. One of the things I haven't been so crazy about, and I didn't know what the name was, is the Drew project. I think they're very bland and whatever, so if this building is big enough to kind of cover that, I own it, so. I maybe said too much, but that's my piece, thank you.
One of, one of the, one of my driving principles is that we are playing for. So we don't play it for a year, we play it for fifty years. Mr. Chesey, I hope you'll be able to last as long as the park can carry. I mean, that's what. Ten years has been a lot of work, we plan for the long range. And when we did this new zoning, you have to come to town meeting, if you don't like it, you need to come to town meeting. All of these decisions are not made by us, they are made by the town, all zoning is done at town meeting. So you need to be aware of all zoning that we are proposing. Cannot come late to the party. Anybody else? Yes?
Sean, here, I spoke to six virtual, I took two or three pages of notes while during the meeting was going on. But I don't need to look at any of it, I spoke to Andy before the meeting started, and she said, you know, we have to look at the project, you have to look at the project. Well, you, you have to look beyond that. Half of this room is filled with people that he built houses for. I don't think there are many developers in this area where people are gonna come out and support the development. Okay, so, you know. John is not gonna do the wrong, so he's like, whatever he does, it's gonna do it right. I wish I could change that. So you have to look at the.
Well, we know that, Sean, but what we always want to say is that you don't want a personal bias between, for the applicant, you want to be able to work ultimately at the project, doesn't matter. I don't, we, we know who the developer is, you need to keep an open mind about that, I totally understand what you're saying.
I was called today to fix a pool heater that the development has been, it's two years old. And I don't think that John's gonna build a project something like that.
And you, we fix pool heaters, I didn't think that. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is John Barry, developed facilities in front of John and Emily. First of all, my recommendation, the slam word is, as an elected official, shut off social media, you'll be much better off.
That's what I was just saying.
And secondly, I mean, all these years, for many, many years, we've heard about SMOCK, um, transit oriented living, it's the mantra. The current administration, the governor is pushing big time for transit oriented housing. I mean, this is the paradigm, this is, I mean, in terms of density, we just have to look next door, to density, we look at what is not really traditional in architecture. This is really keeping in the neighborhood, and I think a hundred percent follows the spirit of the bylaw. And you've said before, we spoke, that town meeting are the ones who direct, guiding folks, that's, that's your blueprint, right? And this part, as Steve Garrett said earlier in the night, he's looking for you folks to kind of point out where is it that we're not consistent here with the bylaw? And it seems that this project is one hundred percent consistent with the bylaw, especially given. It's, it's a project that the town would be proud of because it is a gateway to the town. It's a much bigger improvement over what we have currently. And I would emphasize, if twenty percent of the units are on the area median income or less, which this is, all the units will go toward your portable housing inventory. So that's twenty-two units that will go toward your portable housing inventory that allows you to control the growth of your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to open this?
So take, take them first, I'd like to go last. I'd like to go last if I can, seriously.
No, no, I'd like to speak now, that's how I write the prayer, we write, we're the instructions.
I'm looking at the map right now in the zone of bylaw of New Driftway Transit Village Subdistrict, which they're in. There is approximately nine pieces of property in that district at front on New Driftway. And there's approximately two pieces of property on the north side from the side that goes up to the, to the T station, and heads towards the golf course. Okay, so if you look at the property, one of those is the Drew property, they already have the small building up that's near the entrance there. The only other property there is John's property. You leave his property and the Drew property, and you can drive almost down to Gilson Road, there's no other buildings in that long stretch. He's looking for eight feet on a building. Please think about that. On the opposite side of the road, most of those lots are more pork chop, except for the gas station. And the gas station is up, it's probably not gonna get torn down, it'd be a redevelopment project. The other buildings, if they, if they do come in, are going to be way in the back because they have half the frontage that John has. Okay, if they wanted to put something in the front, they're gonna go one, two, three, four, right in the front, and you're gonna see a massive buildings. John's side, you got one building and an eight foot discrepancy, even though he's allowed to go a hundred and fifty feet if he had different circumstances. But you have the power to grant that, and I would urge you to grant it, it looks like he's done everything to accommodate the town in this project, and I would hope to get a vote in favor of it.
You can raise your hand by looking at the bottom of your Zoom screen if you'd like to make a comment on Zoom. Here's the finger.
Hello, no, I know.
Sir Rich Taylor?
Yeah. Mr. Taylor, are you, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
All right, Richard Taylor.
Identify yourself with your, can you please identify yourself with your name and address?
Absolutely, Richard Taylor, six Northley Farm Road in Situate, Massachusetts. I just want to say that I support this project, I think actually. I think actually everything that the planning board has done for the Green Bush District has been very positive. I'm happy that Karen mentioned about the design review. The only thing I would mention is that there are special, or please take special considerations for the utilities and things like air conditioning because, and even things that come after the fact. I know with the gas station, which I'm very happy with, very nice design, but, you know, the crossroad sandwiches came in and there's a vent hood or a vent stack that's on the front of the building. And I find that visually does not look very appealing. And I know that there's some mechanicals on the side that aren't hidden as much as I would like. And this also goes back to even the new senior center that has the generator that's like fronting on First Parish Road. So I would just ask the planning board and the design review committee to take special consideration and really, really review the utilities and any kind of mechanicals that are going to be shown. Because I do think this project is very nicely done. It's visually very appealing. But a vent hood in the wrong location, some utility stacks can really, let's say, lower the beauty or lower the value, in my opinion. So that's all I would say, but I think, like I said, I walk around Green Bush all the time. I think it was wonderful to have the, go to Green Bush recently, a few weeks ago. A lot of people at that and businesses, and I think it's really becoming a walkable transit oriented village of Situate, and I'm very proud of that. So that's it.
Thank you. So we know that we have to look back to design review, whatever ways that we request.
Yes.
The depth of excellence.
Yes.
And we all said here? So I guess we need to talk about a continuance because I'm going to start talking about. So.
I was wondering if I could interject one thing now that we've heard from the audience. And I would like to ask anyone from the audience that didn't speak, or those that did speak, if you are in favor of the project, kind of raise your hand. Anyone opposed to the project? Thank you for that. I was just wondering what the board's calls would be on the original vote for the 108 feet? Because that seems to be the sticking point. I read my notes indicate that we have four to one in five vote votes pretty much through the pipeline. So is there any change to the three to two vote on 108 feet special permit request?
I will sway my vote.
Excuse me?
You have swayed my vote. And all the continuance, we have to tell you that in the August, I don't think we request that you do. That's just virtually impossible for us to do. This is one, as you know, a many, it just piles up and piles up. I know they will hope you for a decision tonight. It's just absolutely a must and force to do. You can be guaranteed that the decision will be written within August and that, and that you can rest assured that this building is going to be built. I mean, that's. Oh, so barring, barring the fact that the supply chain issues and all that stuff, they won't be able. But I have to tell you, in all honesty, with conversations with John, with Jerry, with Tom, there there was no way in the world that we could do this in June. They're just physically impossible to get that done. And I'm sorry you have to give me that bad feeling, but.
I understand.
But it's me. It would be to be acknowledged.
I understand that, but I would appreciate just that the board would indulge me for just a moment to make my plea. As we all know, John's medical condition is difficult. It has deteriorated rapidly. He is looking at some very unfortunate things that are about to happen to him. This may be the last meeting that he would be able to attend. I'm asking the board to consider a, maybe a diversion from their normal sort of policy of only having one big project on at a time. Maybe the board would consider adding a second project like this. But now we're fully vetted. It would allow us to go through the decision process at that point rather than.
I don't think that we're going to be able to have the decision written. That's the problem. And with all due respect, I have to tell you, I sat a lot of boards and this is not to mean, but that's a little bit of an emotional blackmail, and we all feel for them. And we really do. And I just, I do not want anybody to walk away from me thinking that we are not going to follow through with this. We are absolutely going to follow through with this. We just don't have enough help.
I understand that, but my point was not emotionally blackmail.
I know.
My point was to tell you the realistic aspect of our schedule. And that's what I was trying to do.
And our realistic aspect of our schedule is that it's just, we just have afternoon. We only do one. This is taking us, it's going to be two hours. Unless we have one afternoon, then we have to, this is not as big. So we want to give everybody the time that they deserve. And to have it on another night, it's just not fair to the people preparing this. I'm sorry.
I understand and I appreciate you feeling apologetic about that situation. I just wanted to make my pitch for the record that we are struggling with our timing of the approval of this project in John's medical condition, given the fact that, you know, he just wants to see this project through.
We understand that, but again, limitations. If you could hire us to do more people, that would be great. That's just not going to happen. We've had a long discussion between Karen and I. It's just, there's a lot in the pipeline and I'm very sorry for that, and I really am. But you can rest assured to suggest that this project is going to be done. And you can rest assured that it's hopefully be able to see that, but you know that we're going to do this. And you have a lot of people.
I'm going to draft a decision, put together a draft decision if that would help Karen.
Well, I put together the draft decision and then I get it to the board. I get it to the consulting engineer. After they get it, you get it. So that we, it's a collaborative process, so hopefully. But when it comes down to the night of the special permit reading of the decision, everything is good. I mean, so I do expect to be going out in the field with you in the next few weeks so we can try to figure out what the, you know, public, the density bonus is so that we can keep everything moving.
I was just offering to help draft. I do that for other boards. They ask me to draft.
You know, Zoe does that. So we do not need that.
Be happy to help in any way that I can under this.
So is the board willing to throw in an extra meeting?
I would do an extra meeting.
Depends on when.
As what?
Depends on when.
Well, the soonest that the.
I mean, it's sort of driven by.
Yes, it's sort of. Right, the soonest that the, that an extra meeting could be, would be July 20th. That's the soonest. I mean, that's the soonest I could throw in an extra meeting because we have holidays, et cetera. I mean.
You take anything.
So would that mean that we had three meetings in July? Yeah, that would.
We would be greatly interested if.
Well, I would go to my approach.
So it's the board, it's the board, I will try my hardest to get it done. And so, but with the proper vetting, because that proper vetting is important for this whole, this whole thing. But I could try by, for July 20th. I just, when I send out a draft decision, people are going to need to comment right away. And I am taking vacation in June, so, so while we're here, go ahead.
I hate to tell you this, but I'm off July 20th.
Are you?
It would be better personally if we could do it, you know, kind of a week earlier.
We have 817 Country Way on July 13th. I mean, that's.
That's a huge project.
That's a big project.
I could do it.
Somebody else, it doesn't have to be a Thursday, I can.
It doesn't, that's what I'm saying.
No, it doesn't have to be a Thursday night, as long as everyone agrees to a time.
I can do the second. I don't know if it's good for you or not.
No, what about me? I think I, I think I could do that. It's. Oh, no, I can't do that. Sorry.
Mr. McCall, what kind of a tight schedule? What is the person expecting to go on?
July 26th.
Whoa. Okay. Are you around the 18th, Steve? July 18th?
Uh, I could probably be that. I have a lot of chances that I would probably do it.
Is that Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday, but we can have, we can be out Tuesday. We can find a place. We can find a room to meet.
In the house.
We can find a room to meet, but, okay, that's July 18th one?
July 18th is for me.
Yes. July 18th it is.
Yes, Mr. McCall.
I just have a quick question. If only board members can't make that meeting, is there a chance that maybe in the spirit of what's going on tonight, Mr. Revine might change your vote?
I'll change my vote, Stephen.
Thank you.
July 18th then?
We are.
Okay, Karen will transition to time.
Yeah, we'll go July 18th at 6:30. We will post the agenda before, and so it'll be on the website where the meeting will be held. We post the agenda, the fronting. Well, we'll post this one earlier. We'll post this one a week, we'll try to do it a week earlier. We'll try to post that earlier.
All right, are you all ready for this?
No, I just want to say.
Did you say 6:30, Jason?
6:30? Can we do 6:30?
Yeah.
So definitely said, everybody who is responsible, true responsibility, Karen, we need to do it very tight. We can get it like at 24, 48 hours, please, so we can move this right along.
I will accept the.
And just butterflop. That's the only thing I'm doing.
That is the only thing we are.
Not adding anything.
No, not special on that agenda.
Okay. I will accept the applicant's request to continue the publicater and recite plan administrative review and special permit for mixed use building and stormwater permit in the village center and neighborhood district, Ring Bush Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village Subdistrict, VCN GDEG, NDTB until July, Tuesday, July 18th at 6:30 PM and to continue the topic action until.
August, say, August 31st, 2023.
Until August 20?
August 31st.
31st.
For 2023.
2023.
You're second.
Second.
Okay, yes.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jump the gun? I'm happy to say.
I want to give touch of all. Um, I have a lot of hard things to say and for. I know you guys are a small city. Thank you to Tom out. For all the projects you work on. You're a different home job. I've done through many, but I just appreciate your hard work. Thank you, and thank you for everything.
Okay, so we are now back to a little suspended meeting of March 25th. And we have a continued public here for stormwater permit at 18 Man Hill Road. Yeah, we can hear only engineer.
Yes.
Good evening. Gregory Morris, registered engineer, Morse Engineering, representing property owner, an applicant, M A L Construction Incorporated. This is the second meeting we've had on this project. It's a stormwater permit for a single family home located at 18 Man Hill Road. Since the last meeting, we have gone up, we have done some additional soil testing and we proposed stormwater basin. We adjusted the stormwater basin. It's resulted that we've satisfied the six inch freeboard requirement. We've added a construction phase temporary basin with backup calculations. We've timed grass swales on the property. In a little bit better detail, we provided additional detailing on an erosion control outlet pad and provided an erosion control barrier around the entire limit of work, not just the downgrading limit of work. You had hired Merrill Engineers and Lancer Bears to do a peer review. They have done the peer review. Their latest letter, I believe, is dated May 18th, which states that all of their comments are satisfied. Any of the recommendations that Peter Mason hears, conditions of approval. We have no objections to any of them. Turn it over to you.
Karen?
Merrill Engineers has indicated that they signed, as design applies with the stormwater bylaw and regulations. So I've written a draft approval and you all have that in front of you. And the version that you have includes all of Mr. Pritchard's comments from this afternoon.
Oh, that's.
So that's, that's the version that you have. We have there.
So we stop your plan, not all the year?
So.
Your project is stopped now?
Yeah, I mean, this house is being built on either side of this. This is the vacant lot in the middle. So this will not, yeah.
Michael? Mr. Pritchard, you have your comments.
Yeah. I'm good.
So next.
You, it's public meeting, so if you want a public comment.
I'm just a moment. If you could stay in your room. Online. Is anybody here online that would like to speak?
If anyone's online, I'd like to make a comment. Please raise your hand at the bottom of your screen on your Zoom.
No, nobody's.
No comment. Oh, oh.
Yes.
My linear, I'm 29 Christopher Lane. I'm just curious, not having your paperwork, what Mr. Pritchard had to say to the board.
It was semantics. It was, um, some.
It was some punctuation. It was quality of art.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I didn't make myself ancient copies, but I think.
Overall, engineering.
You know, in this, overall, you can borrow my copies or bring them just to use. It's editing. It's, we're making it really better.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't consider that the decision until we're ready.
That's right. Okay, go ahead, everybody.
I am a supporter of the stormwater permit with the site and sceptic design plan, construction details and erosion control site plan revised dated May 9, 2023, and stormwater permit application, stormwater inch, the design calculations revised dated May 9, 2023, and Figure 1 schematic grading plan dated May 9, 2023. Issues noted below. One, construction shall comply with the following. One, the site and sceptic, sceptic design plan, construction details and erosion control cycle plan revised dated 5/9/2023. Two, stormwater permit application, the stormwater management, design calculations revised dated May 9, 2023 by James D. Garfield P. of Morse Engineering Company, Inc. Three, the operation and maintenance plans for construction and post construction for 18 Man Hill Road latest revision, May 9, 2023. And four, Figure 1 schematic grading plan dated May 9, 2023, except as they may be modified to conform to the conditions below. Any or all owners of the property are site contractors for grading, site work, and installation of utilities, foundations, and ore driveways shall be advised of this approval and these conditions. A copy of the approved plan and conditions shall be kept onsite at all times during construction. Two, any plan changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning office to determine if the changes are insignificant or require a permanent modification approved by the town plan. A stormwater management system, including swales and grass depression, grading dwelling at site and then in equal locations, shall not be changed or expanded without prior written approval of the issuing authority. Expansion includes, but is not limited to, additional pavement areas. Failure to obtain written approval is a violation of the town's general bylaw and subject to combines. Three, copies of this approval and the approved stormwater permit planning conditions shall be provided to subsequent owners who shall be advised of the need for periodic maintenance of the stormwater system and the need to retain the grading of the lot as approved. Prior to the transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office an inspection report certified by a professional engineer showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. The planning office must receive written notification at least one week prior to any change in the ownership of the property occurring during construction. Four, where this stormwater permit requires approval permitting or licensing from any mobile state or federal agency such permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of this stormwater permit, all necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. By the applicant, applicants shall consent to allow members and town officials from the planning board and other persons acting on the planning board on. from the planning board and other persons acting on the planning board or its agents to enter upon any land and carry out such inspections as may be deemed necessary. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their effort to verify that the layout, design, and construction work of the stormwater permit are satisfactory and conform to town specifications and requirements of the board. Six, this stormwater permit must be recorded at the registry duties with proof furnished to the planning office prior to construction. Failure to record the stormwater permit is a violation of the permit and subject to fines included in the town's general bylaws. Seven, the grass depression area shall be installed to have the bottom elevation a minimum of two feet above seasonal high groundwater elevations. Stormwater during construction and all, and during all subsequent operations shall not increase in rate or volume to adjacent properties in the street or off-site. Eight, no clearing beyond the limit of work, limit of clearing, erosion control line as shown on the plan is allowed. The limit of clearing shall be staked with visible snow fencing in the field prior to construction commencing and shall be maintained through of the construction phase. Now, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M. on weekdays and eight A M. on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven P M. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and or federal holidays. Construction work includes any operation of machinery and idling of vehicles. No truck idling on the site or adjacent streets is allowed. Ten, the temporary sediment control traffic swales must be installed in the initial stages of construction prior to any foundation construction. The per, permanent grass depression areas must be fenced off during construction to prevent overcompaction of the soils. Eleven, the grass depression and swales must be retained and maintained as designed as they are components of the stormwater management system. Maintenance must be per the approved post-construction operation and maintenance plan. Twelve, a stabilized construction entrance per the plan detailed shall be installed prior to any work on the site and shall be maintained throughout construction. Thirteen, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or approved agent. At this time, the site shall also be staked to show the house and drainage improvements. All stockpiles shall be surrounded by an A, um, erosion control barrier. Additional erosion control, such as silk pens, silk chalk, and/or hay veils placed prior to a precipitation event may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or adjacent properties during construction. All erosion control shall be installed for the plan and shall be maintained in good working condition throughout construction. The applicant is responsible for maintaining and managing, managing stormwater on the site, onsite throughout the construction period during the transition to fully functional operations and maintenance. Construction approval in no way relieves the applicant from its obligation to ensure stormwater does not impact the abutting properties, and the applicant shall take all necessary steps to prevent such occurrences. Fourteen, the town planner shall be notified when installation of the construction entrance, erosion control, and limited work fencing are complete. If any permit inspection is being requested, this notification shall occur in forty-eight hours in advance of an inspection. Fifteen, no on-street parking or loading or unloading of construction equipment. Our vehicles shall be permitted during construction unless a police detail is provided, if warranted, as determined by the police department. Noise mitigation and proper dust controls shall be used. Sixteen, all disturbed areas associated with this stormwater permit shall be milled and seeded with six inches of screened clean mow. Seventeen, a pre-construction conference will require onsite to verify that the contractor is aware of the stormwater permit conditions and required inspections. Recording of the permit must occur prior to the pre-construction conference with proof of recording furnished to the planning office. Eighteen, construction inspections will be provided as well as A. All inspections for the town shall be performed by the town planner or designated representative of the planning department or planning board and by the contractor, design engineer. All inspections shall be documented with written reports and described compliance with approved plans and supported, supporting application documents and construction specifications. Any variations shall be noted. B, the town planner and record design engineer, engineering firm must be notified forty-eight hours prior to one, installation of construction entrance and erosion control and staking of corners of the dwelling, fencing, fencing, staking, demarking the limit of work through drive, the driveway and drainage improvements. Two, installation of siltation some, including directional swales. Three, bottom of the grass depression and swales. Four, rough grading and the site, including swales, grass depression site and driveway to verify grades are as designed, including slope and cross pitch of the driveway. Five, finished, finished grading of the grass depression and swales with the elevations submitted to the town planner and design engineer for verification. Six, inspection of the site amenities, including house, driveway, walk-in, milled and seated areas. Seven, inspection of final completion of site work, including cleanup to determine compliance with the conditions prior to issuing a certificate of completion, C O C. Work shall be subject to removal if necessary inspections are not requested. If the property is sold prior to completion of the work, the planning board shall be notified at least ten days in advance of the transfer of ownership and the board's rights to reform a buyer that the stormwater management system is incomplete. Spot grade shall be performed during rough grading and finish grading to ensure any swales will drain and no standing water will be present. Nineteen, the applicant will provide a construction and plan completion guarantee of five thousand dollars prior to issuance of building permit to guarantee that the town will be notified when site inspections are required. The as-skill plan will be provided and construction will be completed in accordance with the approved plan. A certificate of completion must be issued prior to return of the construction and plan completion guarantee. Twenty, the property owner shall be responsible for the proper maintenance and operation of the stormwater control system. A best management practices, inspection schedule, and maintenance checklist and plan is attached and shall serve as a guide for the proper maintenance of the system which is required in perpetuity. Twenty-one, construction of the proposed stormwater management system, site utilities, site amenities, and grading shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer who shall certify to the planning board that the site was constructed according to the approved plans. This certification shall be accompanied by an as-skill plan stamped by a registered surveyor and a registered professional engineer who designed the system and shall be submitted to the planning office within ten days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, including top and bottom elevations, in bricks, spot grades as necessary, grading, house, site, amenities, and driveways. Prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, an interim as-skill must be submitted to the planning office for verification that the stormwater management system and grading is following the design. The final as-skill plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of completion of the stormwater permit and all the work must be filed in compliance with the approved permit. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to the final as-skill submitted. If the drainage system is not performing as designed and condition of stormwater is observed going to abutting properties on the street, the stormwater authority can request necessary mitigation to remedy the situation. Twenty-three, underground irrigation systems are prohibited for connecting, connecting to the town's water distribution system or in any manner using municipal water. All irrigation systems installed must be supplied by onsite sources at the expense of the property owner. Violations of this policy shall result in a fine to the property owner and an equal fine, levying of the install of the system.
Eight pages from one house, so imagine you're a big project on six years straight, one.
Go ahead.
You're a second. I'm in favor.
Wait a minute.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I forgot something in here. Um, in the inspections.
What page were we on?
Um.
What number?
I'm on eighteen D. Okay, inspections. Uh, I need to add probably the six or seven, and grass must be growing. This has been a problem that we've been having, and so, okay, the grass must be grown.
That will be number eight.
No, you, you're saying inspection of site amenities.
Right.
Oh, I see.
It's that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think you should say, shall be after grass has started growing.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't inspected before this, this, it started growing, right, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, stabilized. Yeah, stabilized, yeah, so that the grass is, it's not just seeded, but it's actually started here.
Doesn't have to be more, not more.
Um, one comment, I, twenty, I'm not sure if this is what you meant, Karen, I kind of missed it before, but it says the plan is attached.
Yeah, I attach, I, I've been attaching, you know, when I have plans.
Uh, to this decision?
To this decision, I'm filed with the contract because.
Yeah, okay. No, you referenced it in here.
Yeah, I do, I attach, I pulled right from stormwater report and I attach it.
Okay. No, that's fine, I just wanted to check.
Yep. That way somebody can find them somewhere, somewhere down the line if they don't have the report, they can file, they can file it with the recorded copy at the registry deeds.
Okay.
Your second.
Second is mid.
I'll favor.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Will we move to close public here?
Go ahead, we can move. Go ahead, you can.
Move to close public here, you're second.
Second.
I'll favor. Okay. Now, in all business, new business correspondents, industry updates, we have reorganization.
All right, reorganization.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion to, um, nominate Patty to the chair. Thank you very much.
Is there any discussion?
I don't know, we'll go with that.
Okay. I think she's done an impressive job.
Should we vote?
She'll vote.
It's been second. Oh, this is big.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anyway, congratulations. Okay, so now we need to vote for a question. So I know everybody's extremely busy, um, and I know this is a tight continuing issue. Um, so if anybody would like to volunteer, if not, I would want to ask the in, we have the two different tab, but seeing as this is getting started for the next chair of the, of the planning board issues with the vice chair. Um, I know the students here will be, Rebecca, I, you know, that's the topic.
I, I think that, uh, I would nominate Rebecca.
What's that face? Do you want it? She wants me to stay as chlor.
Okay.
I'll do it.
I, I just think that it's, that it's a more, it's an, and it's a great asset to come in and, in my information, it's, it's, it's an essence, it's the way to move through the, through the system.
Right.
So, uh, I, I second that, I'm in favor.
Aye.
And just to my, well, we didn't know the answer every day, but I have a problem, so here we go.
You need to nominate me for chlor.
Oh, I, I'm not making a verb on his work.
That's right.
Okay. I love the way I'm still, uh, Mr. McCollum, you need to, you, what? What did you say?
Nothing.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, what did you say? Share with the rest of the class.
Go on.
So.
No, you had to be listening.
Okay, no, well, well, you need to write a letter where we.
He did, he did. We already have it, it's already planned. And then we have this piece of paper. I move to declare the alternate planning board member position vacant and to request the board of selectmen and planning board jointly appoint a new alternate planning board member and prepare to post the position in the coastal merit. Is that a new slate or?
Okay.
And post on the town's website and social media platforms through the months of July.
So we don't need to develop a record or something?
Yes.
Yes, it has to be a joint vote, it has to be a joint vote.
So.
I'll in favor.
I, I.
Aye.
Okay, so if anybody knows anybody, then you should, like, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll write some, art, we'll write some ads for the paper and we'll put it in and they'll have to process it as they submit their resume. You interview them, you pick who you want, and then we do a joint meeting with the board of selectmen. It's usually been in September, October, um, to try to, you know, fill them, they.
There's a guy in the blank that gave me a room.
Why is that?
That's, yeah, I ran against him too.
Come on, I mean, Jerry, so will you approve on me, you say you love me, it's my point.
I'm trying to get my, figure out where I put everything. My brain's, my brain's not really. I move to approve meeting minutes for May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, which I actually read.
You're second?
Second.
I'll favor.
Aye.
Okay. Hang on one second, people.
We're fine.
And I think you know what we did. Oh, whoa, holy, holy. I move to approve the requisition of hundred forty dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services, five thirty-three countryway, and for sixty-three hundred dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for thirty-three new driveway, seven new gallon terrace, for four hundred ninety dollars to Chesney Consulting for peer review services for seven driveway, for one hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents to Gate House Media, a legal ad for eight seventeen countryway, and for two hundred dollars, twenty cents to Gate House Media for legal ad for countryway, seen in road, national grid, for sixty-two forty to seen in road, national grid, I'm off to it. To Gate House Media for a legal ad for eighteen Man Hill Road, and for four thousand two hundred sixty dollars and eighty cents to Horstley Witten for peer review services, seaside and situant room, and for five thousand twenty-four dollars and ninety-six cents to Hilltop Property Group LLC for return of stormwater bond for one seventy-six Haveli Road.
Second, yes, I'll in favor.
Aye.
What was one seventy-six Haveli Road? A stormwater storm.
Stormwater permit.
Administrative review.
Keep waiting for the bill for the type of repair.
I haven't come yet, I don't know where it is.
It's gotta come. Um, I have to tell you, I asked Freddie to come tonight, uh, to tease the weage watch for the water resources issue. She needs to cut up disturbing information, so Freddie, you want to come up and tell us for George?
You want me to come on?
Sure.
And talk into the microphone, so that people can hear what you have to say.
Um, and I apologize, I was trying to get more information on this and then I looked, um, it's, yeah. So it, um, it came to my attention that well nineteen, which is our biggest producing well, is going to fail per P pass. So it will be offline, um, and that to me is super concerning. Because you remember two years ago when well nineteen was offline, we were in a full water pan, um.
It's gonna fail, they've already tested.
Yeah, they've, really tried two tests, um, so the, um, number is four parts per trillion and, um, I have it in my phone, it was like eighteen point four and eighteen point two. I believe in January and July. Um, so you guys have been approving lots of huge projects. I don't know where the DPW water thing stands right now, but the, um, the water, the deep water study they completed a few years ago had a negative growth trend and it doesn't seem to be, seeing all these projects, it's not negatively trending. Um, so I think that we need to look into some sort of temporary moratorium until we know exactly what we're doing with the water. I know that's not your purview, it's the select board, but, um.
Yeah, I just will tell you that the water and source studies that you had done for these two projects say there's capacity. So that was there. The water and source studies that were done for sixty-one and thirty-three said there's capacity.
Where does well nineteen, what, like, there is this well nineteen?
Well, that's because you said that in public, we can tell you what care.
Oh, I know you can't say it directly, but what is it?
Well, I think all the water goes into the.
It's up on the west end.
Okay.
That is.
I know, I don't know where any of the location.
You're not supposed to. You're not, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Like, we don't want to say it in public, I mean, that's, you know, that's a waste of time.
Well, we do approve the site plan for one.
Yeah, so there's not a lot of that.
But then they have a, made a black list.
Yeah. Okay, we'll get it, we should, yeah. So, I mean, Freddie, I don't know, Karen, how do you know what a, 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 no, we want to, I have no idea, have we tried that before? Yes, no? Uh, I, it's, it's pretty difficult to do. And so it's not a conversation that is taken by the in, and that would have to be go through the T A and water slum.
And so it's not a conversation that is taken by the, and that would have to be go through the TA and water selectmen.
And it probably would have to go through the state.
They probably might have to go through the state, yeah.
Well, they have to file those test results with the D P, so presumably the D P has this information that if.
I have no idea.
It's required.
Yeah, I have not, but.
Right, so I.
No, I think it's required, it'd be, they require a test report, reported, so.
Yeah, I, I, I. And they're, I mean. I don't know, I mean, I, I haven't been.
In fact, I think they're actually required to notify.
Yeah, hopefully we had a law.
The public, all those test results.
In normal, we get notification when there's violation.
Yeah, I have not seen a test result.
Usually it's six months.
Well, it's not a violation right now, because we.
Well, but when we, there's, there's an exceedance of the P pass, we get.
But it's not, and it's not exceeding the levels that are current.
No, but there's.
So there are changes, the state, and I was trying to get the exact date, the state is changing. So at some point in the future, I have no idea if it's tomorrow or five years from now, that well is gonna have to be offline. There's several years until a water treatment plant is built. There is some well exploration in the west end, um, I don't know the timing of that. Dolanwell Fields is, I, it's on off, but I don't think it's a, a goal.
It's still, it's still in the water, it's still in the water.
Um, it's a concern, I mean, there's a, a ton of projects coming online, and we have waters for all of the projects that have already been approved, like that huge one on the Rotary and.
We have, we've done water and source studies, I mean, you can, you can request the water and source studies, so, yeah.
Yeah.
They have reviewed, um, rigorous capacity now, so it's time to tell you.
And they're not saying they're going to, they don't.
The water department agrees with everything is in, that's in these water skies that we're recommending.
Yeah, none of them really address capacity.
No.
They all dress wells, the pipe diggers, and do we need a new pipe, and how we measure it, I mean, that's, that's kind of a.
What do you guys think about like a long-term project, like a big capacity?
You know, can I say something, can I say something?
Yeah.
I kind of feel a little uncomfortable having this conversation.
Okay.
Because it's. Oh, sorry, that's right. I, I kind of feel like.
That's right. Trending, I won't, I'm totally sorry about that, yeah.
We're trending into an area that if you want to talk about this, we should put it.
We'll put around in future, okay.
At future agenda.
So sorry, I should not want to.
I'm sorry.
But I wouldn't want to talk about a future agenda unless DPW was serious, so it's, uh.
Right, so I think that we have to, I think it needs to be a conversation.
Thank you.
And, you know, the water commissioners probably need to be involved.
Okay.
I just, I don't want to see it.
I know. Sorry about that, Freddie put you on the spot, I wish you'd known that, so maybe we can reach out to the proper people and we can establish a time when somebody should check up.
Okay. Act.
Does it have to be here, can we go to.
No, it could be somewhere else, as long as, um.
It's on in Virginia. Yeah, sorry, yeah, okay. Alright. So, and we can, so, and I, I listened to zoning the other night, forty B has been approved on a working bucket um, to, to start, and I, I don't know, they don't really know, um, if it comes out the way it's designed, it's really gonna be a, a, a good looking project. Um, better than what we have down the street, there's no doubt about that. Um, and I listened to a MIBA study about, um.
One point sixty three.
I know, well, I hear a lot of people like that about it here.
Uh, so there's, um, yeah, the traffic has picked up a bit and it, it's slowed down the traffic on the part of three A. What I have noticed is that there are now a lot of people walking on the street on three A.
Oh, you could get killed.
Oh, I, I know, yeah.
Yeah, people have.
Yeah, but there's, yeah, there's, um.
What they walking to?
Um, like, there's at least a person, like, walking or, or biking, like, every, you know, or something, I don't know, it's like sidewalk worthy, but it's weird because it always seems like they're going, they're walking with the traffic.
Just wants to.
Come to the other side, you know, but, yeah, there's, so there's more foot traffic on three A and, uh, there's more car traffic, but it's actually gonna slow down the car traffic on three A.
And like I said, I, I like, it was a MIBA study about an ENF, which is called our leverage to me, which has to do with the water treatment. Uh, the only thing that struck out to me was they asked, um, how many sites did you look at before you decided, and they said dozens, I thought they all looked at two, so I don't know if that was, I didn't question anything, I just kind of sat there and listened, uh. So Karen, what is the, obviously, what is the ENF doing this?
That, that was, it was the ENF Scobing session, so they had their public meeting and then the secretary, environmental affairs, will decide if they need, um, an environmental modification.
A MIBA review basically, yeah.
Right, so a MIBA review, if they need an E I R, because they need, they need state permits, they need highway access permit, they need a permit for the treatment, for the treatment.
Well, the other thing they can help in this is that, this is kind of an interesting study, that all the buildings at the present water treatment plant are not coming up. So the little shed that's, I think, has a pump in it is gonna stay, that horrible decrepit garage is gonna stay, the only thing coming down is the plate itself, and we have to.
Well, the pump has removed the water to the treatment plant.
Well, that's what means, but then the garage is gonna stay, which obviously quite safe, because they have to make that apart continuous with the Green Bush Neighborhood Center, but then we're gonna cut down trees, it was very disconserving conversation about, about what they're doing, why they're doing. The other thing is, I listened to conservation, can't like, um, the yellow house, I don't know the number, on Chief Justice Cushing Highway, that sits at the bottom of the Hill Attack Factory is, um, trying to forecast for conservation, but I think on top of that, um, they want to put in four K studio, um, conservation is pretty sure is in the legal accessory level. So we'll see how they deal with that, uh, has to do with what they consider stolen or whatnot, so might be a time to revisit that kind of bylaw, what would be considered to be.
These are studios, they get movies to be.
No, 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 and I, I think he said, I mean, it's gonna come into the kitchen to get the coffee, I, I don't know, so, but conservation is all over there. And I just see today the Wookiee Theater is gonna open in a while, or the Wookiee Palace, if you want a cup, you have to be, sort of like, I think, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I just met at the last meeting.
We'll do the. Um, so that's all my ideas on, what are any C P C things?
No.
No, no traffic studies, nothing. Yeah, no.
No.
Public building, nobody else is what you're using? No. Karen?
Alright, we remain very, very busy, um, I am meeting with town council tomorrow, or I think I am. Um, and I have several items on my list, um, three thirty four C J C, uses gotten the bylaw, multifamily housing, and affordable units.
Okay. I think.
I can, I can with the plan we had to submit to.
I get it.
You know, on the, uh.
We are getting, we have a technical, we have a technical consultant who is going to be, we're gonna be working with
We have a secret.
June through September to try to come up with recommendations for, uh, how we need to change the zoning. Um, so we're looking forward to that, um, right now we've kind of, we haven't formally appointed any type of working group, but right now we know that, you know, Patty will be involved in a working group, I'll be involved in a working group. Um, we, we've asked Karen Connelly from the, the select board to be involved in a working group, um, and we think that we. On, in which to develop actual zone.
So Karen, I want to ask you this, we not have any appointed housing person, um, that Laura Keely has appointed, a, a, aside from the mass housing, who's really gonna just concentrate on, uh, affordable housing, especially F V T A communities, maybe we can reach out to our state rep or maybe try to relieve so that they know how dire it is for us that they're not housing everything, maybe, no, I know these people draw, says they never got a little back with the water, but we don't know that.
Well, I, it was under the impression that they have filed some legislation, um, and to change it to. So, and so where it's required, where mixed use is required, you can't count it. So we can't count that N D T V district and there's, it's all based on unit capacity, how much the land holds not necessarily how much is built out there or will be built out there. I mean, cause as you know, you're seeing, nobody's coming in for these developments to do the by right number, they're all coming in for the spec, they're coming in for a special permit because they want a density bonus and, um, you know, that, that's increasing the numbers, that's elevating the density per acre. I mean, our initial calculations where we may have to raise four, four or five districts to seventeen units per acre. And, you know, that might seem okay for the north, um, North Situate Outer Village, um, but, and I, it's just how that gets presented in some type of, um, working informal, in information sessions we're gonna have to have before town meeting, so people understand that this is, it's, it's a, it's a show, it's a required thing, we have to, we have to comply. But, you know, if you start to think about it, I, I haven't calculated the density of these, some of these developments we're doing they're probably more than seventeen units per acre because they're going over the, the amount.
Well, yeah, like I said.
So.
It was twenty two units for less than an acre, we just did tonight.
Right.
But it's one count towards the numbers of the way it is now.
That's correct, right, that's correct.
And same.
So can we, uh, can we change the required mixed density thing in zoning and then rechange it back? That would be the easiest thing.
Well.
Well, that's a staple.
You gotta jump the topic.
And so, I mean, hopefully the consultant will make recommendations that will, that will be, that will be beneficial. Because they also introduced an affordable component, a portion of this, and right now we're, we're doing twenty percent affordable because, for density bonus, because, you know, everybody wants the affordable housing. Well, if you go more than ten percent, you have to do, uh, uh, an analysis, a fiscal analysis. Now, how does that, you know, they're pushing, they're pushing multifamily housing, the state needs housing, they're pushing affordable units, but the two are, the two aren't going together.
That sounds about right.
You know, I, you weren't twenty five, we put a big choice.
Well, we're losing population in Massachusetts.
I know, that's true.
I know, there was the housing crisis, right?
You know, affordable housing.
And that's a, that's a huge job, you would, it would.
It would be a whole new way out of there.
But the other thing that you think about, the, um, this was talked about years ago, in the financial district in downtown Boston there is no housing there, and there's so many of those units that are empty, that would be a perfect spot.
I'm going.
So that's a, well, that's why they converted, like, for Carol, you know, the eight block district, to take up all their residential property over there.
For.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
But ever since that have worked from home year started, they've, like, a lot of the commercial
Yes.
Yes.
Buildings that are trying to convert them over to residential.
And you probably what that is, so all of the, all of the, um, businesses that was supported by those people are going under. That, that's a huge issue, so all that little modern pops and all those little potatoes, those sugar shots, did yours, so we've compounded the stay at home
Right.
Yeah.
with not having anybody go back to work immediately, so those people are losing their business, that's a problem, yeah, that's true.
So maybe if they.
But just.
Are you sure? Yeah. Creative and turn, um, those office, empty offices into housing.
Well, I think that they do that in other cities, we have a going San Francisco, there's a huge push on, and nobody in San Francisco, anymore, it's so expensive, and.
So we will have to have public information sessions and hopefully this fall, I mean, hopefully by October, we'll have a good feeling of some language that we need to adjust our bylaw with, um, that will hopefully will be able to have, explain to town meeting why it needs to be done, um, and that it, it's a show. Okay.
So they're talking about, we had fifteen units per acre and, but the state is talking about coming up to seventeen and.
No, right now, in North Situate, we have fifteen units per acre.
Fifteen, yeah.
In Green Bush, in most of the districts, we're twelve units per acre by right, the N D T V, we're sixteen units per acre. But we, when we did our preliminary calculations for the compliance plan, it says in order to achieve twelve hundred thirty nine units we need seventeen units per acre in basically North Situate Outer Village, G B C, G W B, N R N.
Well, is there any limiting language in the, like, in the state statute about, hey, we're gonna leave it at this density, or, or should we just assume that it's gonna keep going and going? Like, they're gonna increase the density until every building, you know.
I, I think you just have to, you just have to zone for compliance, uh, and how, how you, you can, you can change your zones so you can have a denser zone over here and a less dense zone over here, but I'm not so sure that works, that concept works for Situate.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah, you know, because we have limited area to zone for this, this area, and I mean, so hopefully, we, hopefully the consultant has some good suggestions and understands, you know, our bylaw and how, how we can actually make minimal changes that will be saleable to the town Situate to achieve compliance with the law.
Easy, easy, that one, I don't.
Yeah, really. Um, do you know anything, have you heard anything further about sold for North Situate, or is that still?
Cardy line's still three to five years.
Yeah. I, I think you all know that a lot of the property in North Situate is either up for sale or has been sold.
Yeah.
Paul Sharon bought, I don't know, well, he paid for it, but he bought where Taj is and there used to be a movie theater or a playhouse.
Yeah, in the back.
In the back, he bought that. Yes, and then eight seventeen countryway, that LLC that's come before us, that's been purchased from our.
Will Hill.
No, and.
How, Livingstone.
Livingstone, and then Will Hill's property, A J A International, that is on the market right now for one point six million. Splash bought, um, or.
Robin, yeah.
Bought Bound Brook. And then, um, Adam Cutler bought the old Handing and Institute, so gradually, these pieces are being purchased with the idea of if and when.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
So that's, um.
Okay, hold it.
And then I don't know if any of you ever drive through the west end of Cohasset and have noticed that they demolished a building at the end of, um.
A tree street.
Tree Street, yeah.
Well, they're putting a store in there.
Right, they're putting in a general store.
Merle, Merle Brown's own property, that used to be a store years and years and years ago.
Yes. Yeah, and then putting it back in again.
A general store is going by across the ball, yeah.
Took two years to get that through.
Yeah.
But John, it's a great idea.
That Clay Rod is jumping water in the night.
Yeah.
He did, does anyone know what's going on, like, a little postie?
Not really.
Holes in the window, so.
He died.
It's gonna get destroyed.
He died, Bob Newsom died, so it is now in, for me. So God knows how long, but that will last.
So Karen, how long is something to get before it loses its, you know, its original intention?
Cause they're on.
I think it already does. It does.
I think it's four, I think the way it was rewritten, it was four years, um, don't quote me, I think it's four years.
It's already there, yeah.
But it was closed before.
Right.
Before he died, so it's been closed for a number of years, they've been trying to, they cleaned up some of the site recently, um, but I, I don't know.
They're putting.
The postie.
I'm just. I walk by there several times a week, it is not cleaned down.
Well, no, I want to contribute, I mean.
Alright. Oh, right.
They cleaned up some of it.
The alleys, those pretty little windows up there.
They cleaned up some of it.
Yeah, it used to be a slate.
Like that historic, is that a historical building or?
It's closed, it, and it should be, it's kind of a artistic.
Karen, can I say something, it wasn't um, historic purpose, it was a fire, it's a fire, it said there was a fire in the sixties.
Oh, okay.
So, it's, it's like, it's at no value, it's just.
So, it was.
Historical up to the sixties.
We're actually, we're, we're trying to make it through there.
Well, I put everything together, it was a young, dirty statue, I guess, I just, I just.
It's expensive.
So, we have.
Only a century or ice cream.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.